Welcome everyone, we'll get started in about a minute. We have two sign up sheets tonight on the podium. One is for sewer discussions and the other is for anything but sewers. So if you want to speak tonight, make sure you sign up on one of the sheets. We're going to cover the non sewer topics first. So we'll get started in about a minute, thank you. All right, now I call the meeting order, we all please rise. Just remind here, if you have a microphone, please put it on silent or vibrant, thank you. First order business is roll call, Allison.
Dave Brugl, Joe Boyd, Kevin Kelly, Eric Kinder, Phil Morris, Lynn Morris.
Next item is a consent agenda consists of all of the routine, non controversial items for village board. It's the minutes from our last meeting, we did not have a closed session meeting. And it's the bill list that Sarah sent out for the financial statement of payment of bills. Are any questions on any of the items on the consent agenda? If not, what promotion approved consent agenda items?
The motion to approve the consent agenda.
Do we have a second? Any final questions or discussion? Allison, roll call. Phil.
Joe Boyd, Kevin Kelly, Eric Kinder, Lynn Morris.
Mark, can we get the extra microphone to go over the podium?
Oh yeah.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to do the citizens' hearing on anything not related to sewers. When you come, please come to the podium, we'll have a microphone for you. If the red light is on on the microphone, the microphone is on, then everyone will be able to hear you. And please, who's first on the list, Allison?
Warren Evans. What did you just say?
You want to be on the sewer list?
I am on a sewer list, you were doing sewer now or no?
Non sewer, I'm sorry, if I said sewer, I meant non sewer, sorry.
Susan and Lori.
Hi, I'm Lori Petersen, Susan Haskelhorn, we're a member of Hudson United Methodist Church and we're here at the U C N big staff. We are the coordinator for the Hudson Trumpet Tree. This is the fourth year for that and the reason we're here is we would like to request some funding as possible. Fourth year, we're up to nineteen trunks, we're expanding this year to the third spot of the fire department. Which will include another hay rack ride stop and we have enough trunks that we had to, you know, expand a little bit there. We have a limited budget, our budget's coming from, we have six sponsors currently in the area. There's a non fund sponsors also that help with some of our decorations and that type of thing. But we're trying to use the money that we have and that we get every year from these sponsors to build some of our durable goods. You know, important things like graveyard signs, sanitary cloths and that kind of thing. But we also use money for additional things, like we assist with the, some of the nonprofits if they don't have enough money for the candy. Because we have three hundred kids company, but that's pretty expensive for some of them. So we offer debt assist for those types of things. So our budget this year, we're looking at a little less than a thousand dollars. We will kind of fund most of what we would appreciate if you would consider helping us this year with this. So that we can get some of those additional items. I'd be happy to answer any questions about it. It's the last Saturday of the month this year, twenty eighth, from three to five. We've run between two seventy-five and three hundred fifty kids through there every year. It's been wonderful and we have three new sponsors, three new trunks this year, which is fun. Any questions?
Was there a specific amount?
Just two hundred fifty dollars.
First, I want to compliment you two on the organizational job you've done with Comfort Tree. It's been a tremendous success in Hudson. It's been, like you said, two to three hundred kids or more showing up for it. And it's gone over great, so we thank you for all the work you put into it.
All the, you know, all of these volunteer organizations, you know, we've got nineteen different businesses here in town that are nonprofits and jumping in and they all do.
Okay, Sarah, do we have a category that this expense could fit into?
I think we could, yeah.
Okay. Are you on the board, make a motion now?
Hey Dave, since I'm in the Lions Club with you and since my wife and I are going to do Trumpet Tree, is that a conflict of interest if I vote on this?
No.
Okay.
It's a community activity, so.
Okay.
It's like if all of our kids went up and participated, you know, it would not be a conflict.
Okay, so, so this, so the pros go to, so where are they going to?
Yes, we use the church as our.
As this, okay.
Anybody like to make a motion on this?
I make a motion that we support the comfort tree by an extra two hundred fifty dollar donation.
You have a motion to make a two hundred fifty dollar donation towards Comfort Tree? I'm sorry, in a second, does anybody have any questions or additional discussion or thoughts? Great program, so Allison, roll call.
Joe Boyd, Kevin Kelly, Eric Kinder, Phil Morris, Lynn Morris.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I so appreciate it.
Thank you for doing that. Is there anyone else on the down?
Greg Couch.
Just take a look at the agenda for today. We've got listed, and this is all the public knows, is something ordinance. Could we please start putting the ordinances that you're planning on talking about on the village website? It doesn't really cost you anything, we're not limited to two pages of paper. If we're using, if we're making good use of that website. It'd be a lot more useful if the citizens knew what the agenda items were in detail.
We can do that, can't we Sarah?
Yeah.
I will. Okay, that's pretty much.
Good suggestion. Okay. Okay, next we're going to move to the sewer discussion and I'm going to talk for a few minutes about what's been going on. And then we are going to ask Greg some questions, we'll get some answers and then we'll also have questions and answers for questions from the trustees for additional information. So to start with, I want to follow up on questions that came up at previous sewer meetings about binding and non binding referendums. We were asked whether or not a binding referendum could be held and that graph answered. Section twenty eight dash one of the Illinois election code provides that binding referendum may only be submitted or authorized by statute. By no statute authorizing the village to submit to a binding referendum, question of whether it disrupts the sewer system. So in my opinion, the answer is no, this should cannot be submitted to voters for binding referendum. Some villages he's worked with has submitted advisory referendum, a cold public that will follow the will of voters as if it's reflected in the referendum. So that might be another option for us. Some funding mechanisms for a new sewer plant require a referendum, so there's a tangential that issue that could go to the voters also, so we cannot do a binding referendum, but we have another possibility of not binding and agreeing to buy. So that'll be in our options as we start working on options.
So my question to that is, could we make it binding? I know that we don't, by law, we don't have to have it binding, but can we make it binding? Because I got something from the circuit clerk says the last day for your governing body to adopt a resolution or ordinance to allow for binding public resolutions to appear on the ballot is January second. And the last state of the election official to certify any public binding questions to the election authority in Plank County Clerk, this is from Kathy Michael's office, Bradley Byer, co-director of elections, sent this to me on my request. And that date is January eleventh twenty-three, so, I mean, is that a possibility? Is that a possibility if we did it, if we wanted to do it and we would have passed this resolution or ordinance to allow it to be on the referendum? Can we do it?
We could do a non binding referendum on that next January or have that in by January. But we can't do a binding referendum because the building sewer is not eligible for a binding referendum for state law. To non binding, or if we had another topic that would be a binding resolution eligible, then we could get it in by those states.
So is, so, so like the unified referendum should pass that, but that was a binding referendum? Just comparing apples and apples, trying to compare it, that's a binding referendum that if that failed, then that unified wouldn't take effect, but you're saying that we can't do that for the sewer?
Correct.
Okay.
We can make it a non binding question about based on state law.
Can I jump in there Dave? So you can, you can adopt a resolution of the board indicating the board intends to follow the will of the voters. You can submit it, you can submit it as a non binding or advisory referendum. You can commit as a board, not knowing the results of that, that you intend to follow, whatever the will is of the majority of the board. Still doesn't, it's still not equivalent to binding referendum. You still have to vote after the referendum results are back how you want to proceed. But that's the nearest you could do to a binding referendum on a question like this. And it's, it's hard, there's a lot of complexity in the election code, even between units of local government. So it's not always, you can't always run even parallel, you know, they can do it in this situation, but we can't, that's oftentimes the case.
So would that have, so do these, in that case, if we do do that, do these dates still apply to us as a village? The ones I read from the McLean County Circuit Clerk, or that is meaningless? It's just the due date to get it on the ballot?
Yeah, so there, there's still, I, and I had a little trouble hearing you, you were coming through extra clear, the point where I couldn't pick it up, it was like extra loud. But it sounded like you're reading dates available either from the county clerk or from the state board of elections. And yeah, there are buffer dates where you would have to submit the question within X, not less than X days, more, more than Y days before the election. Yeah, you, you would definitely have time right now to get it on the spring election. And I didn't hear the date that you said, but there would certainly be ample time, usually that filing, it's a certain number of days back from when the election is in terms of your filing deadline. And I'd have to look at the calendar to confirm, I have no reason to doubt if you stayed to specific dates that you were given at a thing correct. But it would roughly be January would be your filing cutoff, I believe, without checking on it specifically.
On there, they also put the page numbers on this for me too, so their election timeline packet for twenty twenty-four. They said to the initial deadline of January second twenty twenty-three, they put in they put in not twenty-three, it says page twelve and page fourteen for the current year, I said the wrong year, but I meant for twenty-four.
And I can, while you guys are talking, I can pull up the election calendar and have some more information from the meeting.
They stated binding public resolution or binding public questions to appear on the ballot, that's how they stated it, so I'm not sure.
Yeah, it was.
Anything else, what the other deadlines could be?
Yeah, the advisory or non binding would have, would be mentioned separately, but I can look that up. But I'm a hundred percent certain you have time before the spring election to get that on the election. So, yeah, to get that on the next ballot, so, but I'll, while you guys are talking other matters, I can pull that up here. I have the state board of elections website handy soon, any minute and I'll confirm those dates.
Kevin, thanks for checking on that, did you ask about a binding resolution?
Yeah, what I, what I stated, the question that I had was what is the election timeline for a referendum vote to occur for the village of Hudson? Specifically, when is the due date your office needs for the information and when will the next, be the next available election? And do you have any other information on the requirements? So I emailed Kathy Michael and Bradley, or Bradley Byer. And my, Kathy Michael responded that Bradley would get back to me, he did, and that's what he gave me, those two.
Would you like to follow up to see if the same date applies for a non binding referendum?
I'll leave it to our turn.
Okay, we'll leave to that, okay. Any other questions on binding resolution, binding referendum?
I gotta hold up. It's actually, if you're on the, if Kevin, you have that election calendar, it's actually the, it's the same date, January second. So on page twelve of the two thousand twenty-four election calendar published by the state board of elections. It has the last day for governing bodies to adopt resolution ordinance to allow for binding questions. And the very next line is last day for county municipal school township and park boards to place advisory referendum on the ballot by resolution. And it provides a statutory reference, so you have until January second, two thousand twenty-four, submit a question for an advisory referendum beyond the spring election.
So, so on that, it says last day for the governing board to adopt a question, so then the last day for us to submit it to certify is the January eleventh, is that what you showed too?
Yeah, so it's to place advisory, I don't know, I didn't look at the date to certify it, I was more looking to the lower bar.
The village, in parentheses, he put in the village of Hudson Court.
Yeah, yeah, the January eleventh date is would be the local election official to certify binding question or advisory referendum, yes. Your date to adopt by resolution, the question is January second, the date for the clerk to certify that question is January eleventh. Yes, I may leave with your dates.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Okay, next item, before we get to Q and A. I had a meeting with the BCA engineer and a couple of local residents who are also sewer experts. If you've come to a lot of our board meetings or sewer meetings, you could tell there were disagreements and there were questions between the villager engineer and the local experts with sewer experience. During our public meetings, there was no progress being made in resolving or really having good discussions on some of these differences. I felt the best way forward was to hold a non public meeting with the experts. I did not expect the experts to come out to agree with each other. My expectation was that they would each understand the other's opinions and move forward from there. A meeting with two or more trustees and myself is a public meeting that must have a posted agenda prior to the meeting. And if I were to schedule a public meeting on sewers, I would want to announce it at a regular board meeting, put it in a coil so everyone could learn about it before we had the meeting. Since we had not made any progress in the public meetings, I scheduled a non public meeting with BCA, the Hudson residents, one trustee, which was Lynn and myself. The agenda for the meeting is available to anyone who wants it, Sarah has copies of the agenda. Then you can have a printed copy and we're going to cover most of the questions from that meeting in a minute. When our meeting started, it became obvious that we need to explain where we're at in the process for the sewer study. Sarah, can you please put up that display? When we set up the contract with BCA several years ago, we defined a five step process for the village and BCA to use. And it would take us from starting the study all the way to completing the bill. At a very high level, the five steps are, I'm not sure that's the right one, Sarah.
That's the other one, hold on, I thought you were talking about your meeting agenda.
Anyway, the first step is to develop an initial plan with options and costs. And I E P A required us to submit that plan when it's completed. The second phase is just decide whether or not to proceed. And if we proceed, submit the grant applications to I E P A and any other organizations that we can get grants from. The third phase is to decide whether or not to retain the engineering firm, BCA. Submit the final design plans to I E P A and gather additional cost estimates. And for the third phase to happen, the final design has to be completed. The fourth phase at a high level was bid the project, and the fifth phase at a high level is build the project. So it probably would have been helpful if I would have included this information in the original sewer study discussions that we had. As always, hindsight is wonderful, I did not include it. At the time, I didn't think it was terribly relevant, but it probably would have been, so everyone's aware of where we're at. We are finishing up phase one now and our next step will be to define what our options are and make a decision whether we're going to move forward or show where we're at in the project. So tonight, we're going to review the agenda items from the non public meeting. BCA will explain their position on the initial plan and what can be done if we continue with the project during the detailed construction design phase. Board members will initially be able to ask questions at any time during this. And after we're through with the agenda, then we'll have the public portion for the public to ask questions about what we're talking about or make any other comments about the sewer program, just like you have at any other meeting, so. The agenda, I'm going to, trustees have got a copy of it. The trustees were aware of the meeting. And I'm going to start with the last couple of questions, the one from Russell. And we'll go back to the first set of questions and.
We just real quick clarify, move forward doesn't mean that we are making the decision right now that we are going to sewer or not. Move forward means.
Move forward means.
We would like to look into the next phase.
Right, looking into the next phase, it's trying to help the citizens and Greg understand each other's point of view on this. That's, that's what I mean, I don't mean moving forward, yes, we're going to go with the bill. So I apologize for my praise, praising there.
But so that's, what, what phase is that, I mean, what you just said, what phase is that, is that still even phase one?
Yes, the end of phase one started phase two. We make a decision whether to show everything that we've got.
Phase two is we make a decision.
What phase do we actually have to make the decision?
Well, I mean, this, this document laid out five phases. Phase two is village select one of the options or terminate the project. One of the options being, I assume, meaning one of the options, and it's in the plan, so either force main or the. So we're not going into phase two, we're just staying in phase one?
Right now, we're just still in phase one, yeah.
I mean, I have, I have a question related to this, but I can wait till later.
Okay, go ahead, ask it now.
Well, so it's, it's a kind of a budget question. It's, I mean, we're still in phase one. The last invoice we got from BCA, you know, has like phase seven and eight on it. And I wondered, I think we pulled some work forward or something probably from other phases, are these different meanings of phase seven?
They're different meanings, Joe.
Okay.
Those are not related to the phases that Dave had.
Okay, so then my other budget question. I think these five phases come from a document titled agreement for professional engineering services, village Hudson, McLean County, Illinois from November second, twenty twenty-one. And in that document, I believe, I believe it has an estimate of seventy-six thousand dollars for four hundred and ninety-five hours of labor with some expenses and contingency. And the latest invoice, you know, we're up to a hundred forty. Can you explain, you know, what, what, do we pull stuff forward, is that how we're? So I thought seventy, I thought seventy-six thousand was covered phase one, am I just wrong?
There's some additional work that was done.
Okay.
And that's included in those, in that invoice there.
Okay. It was like, I remember, I remember voting to like add some mapping and stuff, is it like mapping? And, and we, did we vote on all these, I mean, we're seventy thousand over, what?
Well, we had to pay the last fourteen thousand dollar bill.
Well, we should have, but.
It was that one, so, but, but we do our monthly approval, we were not staying on top of where accumulated costs were.
Okay.
And I have asked BCA to review this and help justify why we're way over our initial estimate.
Okay.
And Greg has been on vacation for a bit, so he hasn't had time to have his, I don't think he looked that over.
I wasn't really watching either, I didn't realize we were getting that high, but yeah, it's, it's double what the initial estimate was, so.
Sure, we'll be deriding details.
Okay. Okay, that was all I had for that.
Okay. Good questions. Okay, question, Russell. Got three topics, the flow of sewage he thought should go from east to west. Can we take advantage of land elevations and could eliminate some of the pumping stations? Can we take advantage of land elevations and could eliminate some of the pumping stations? And Greg, would you kind of like to recap what we talked about?
Yes. What, what the village has in the facility planning report is not a design. And I, and I want to clarify that the submittal to I E P A is not a design submittal that's been sent forward. It's the submittal of facilities planning report. And that was sent to the financial assistance section. That provided the grant funds for the village. So they have received that. They've provided some comments back. We haven't acted on any of those comments, but that really is the phase two work. That the village is looking at in that listing. So at this point, there's no formal design. There's no submittal to EPA for permits. So I wanted to make sure that was clear. As far as the layout of the sewer system. As Mayor said, there was a discussion between some of the citizens at the last meeting on. Where the layout should be done. And I think we resolved a number of those in that. The preference from a design perspective is to put the sewer system. Into the alleys in the backyard so that you can take advantage of. The septic system being in the back and the discharge from the home going to the backyard. There also was a discussion about running alongside the ditch or in the ditch. Technically, we can't put it in the ditch. And if we were to run alongside the ditch. We'd be running into several properties that currently don't have space between. The structure and the available property next to the waterway. So that's a real consideration. Another element is that the slope of a sanitary sewer system is fairly flat. And costs that are related to a sanitary sewer system increase dramatically the deeper you go. So one of the reasons that there were. The number of lift stations that we've shown on the plans was to be able to. Take advantage of having the lift station do the movement of the sewer rather than having to. Have a very deep gravity sewer. The lift stations that are shown. On the plans that are part of the facility planning report. There's a possibility that we could eliminate one, if not two of those by combining systems. The conservative approach at this moment would be to include lift stations so that. Those costs are incorporated in the initial cost estimate. And that developable land on the perimeter of the village was available to feed into those lift stations. Those lift stations would be final detail in the final design based on. Actual elevations that the lines are going to run and on preferences for the future by the village.
I think there are also statements made that. We have three houses that are very close to the ditch. And the opposite side of the ditch might be a possibility. But no one has really looked at the slope of the ground. Because the, you know, even though the house might be further away, the slope might be worse. So we're not sure whether it's possible or not. And that if we do a final design, that could be looked at. Is that correct?
No, that will be looked at.
Okay, will be looked at if we do a final design.
Yes.
Okay. So as far as east to west. You designed it west to east and.
Basically, the, the layout that is in place right now is. Pretty much north to south. The ground slopes to the west and. It would be a disadvantage to slope that to the west and then have to lift it all the way back to the southeast where. We'd have to take it to the binward connection. Also, the binward connection being at the southwest. Corner of the village. Eastments and right of way were a consideration at this stage. Making sure that there was a clear, secureable route. That would be available either from the village or from the state as opposed to private eastments where. Those are a lot less certain at this stage.
Okay, so that kind of answers question one and two. Anybody on the board have questions on this part, Joe?
Yeah, so I don't understand what the plan we have is. It has routing and everything. What's the point of writing up the plan with the routing? If you were saying the real plan could be completely different.
Not, not completely different.
Well, I think you just said we could, we could change it to going down the creek.
Yeah, that, that was a suggestion that was made by somebody other than ourselves. Our, our perspective, our perspective is the layout that's shown right now is probably the most advantageous to the program.
If we asked you to, you'd look at others or something?
Yes.
I mean, it seems like that, that does, does the, do the land elevations generally go from higher in the east to lower in the west? I mean, from what I looked at, hindsight, it seems to.
Yes, yes, I, I had to make sure I understood your question.
I mean, for a gravity sewer, I mean, your, your point, your point was if you dig deeper, it costs more.
Correct.
So for a gravity sewer, wouldn't it cost less if you used the land elevation?
Only if you needed it. Gravity sewers flow at a very flat rate. So an eight-inch sewer falls about four tenths of a foot in a hundred foot. My concern on the creek layout is that we would have to go deeper than necessary to hit that layout. Because the land falls faster than the slope of the sewer that we want. And if that's the case, instead of being here in an ideal situation. We'd be down here because we'd have to be. Adjacent to the creek in some sort of side slope or we'd have to bench that out. Construction would get more complicated. We could certainly look at any layout that makes sense or that the village directs us to.
And so you just, I mean, we could get rid of one or two lift stations.
I, I don't know that I used the word to get rid of.
Oh, okay.
We could consolidate. So right now, there's three lift stations on the east side of the village. Those likely could be combined. If the village decided that property to the east wasn't going to be developed in the future. And that you would need a lift station to be able to service those areas. Given that the collection system right now flows from the east side of the village more to the center core. Those gravity sewers at that far side would be the shallowest. So without a lift station over there, we would be very limited to what could be serviced into that. Lift station, into that gravity sewer. Now, the discussion was, wouldn't a developer have to put in his own lift station? That could be. And, and if that line was four foot deep at the edge of the village. He would have to. But that would factor in the cost of the lines.
So you're saying some of the lift stations, I mean, we, we've talked before about there was a lift station out by the highway. It was a lift station that probably wasn't going to be used until we have businesses out there. You're saying some of the ones on the east side are also kind of like not used until somebody builds out east?
There, there would be right now at least two of them that would be used for the collection system as it's laid out.
It can be used, but they can also be combined if we decided.
If you combine two lift stations, you all just have one lift station?
That's correct.
Okay, so you do get rid of some of those.
Get rid of this kind of both.
Trying to figure out what's your words.
So like, like as a board, we have to decide if we want to prepare the village for growth, like for a developer. Or is, is cost more? But I don't know the right answer to that right now.
Yeah, I mean, I'm getting way ahead of us, but I mean, we have a plan that's unaffordable at the moment. So it seems like.
Absolutely. Yeah.
It seems like.
Agreed.
You gotta find somewhere to cut.
But that, that's the reasoning for all that the. Actually, or all the lift stations was because they were tasked to offer a plan for growth protection. And they work with like the planning mission and. Our wishes to do that. So that's why it's been the planning report.
Okay.
It's kind of like worst case scenario.
Okay, back to my first question. I mean, so we should just be ignoring the layouts in the current plan? You're saying they could change? Or you're saying that's your best, your best choice is what's in there?
That's correct. That's correct. And the only way to quantify. What's going to be necessary was to establish a layout. So you could say that sewer system is going to cost and then just kind of look up in the sky. Or you could have actual quantities.
Well, sure, but even if you change the routing of the pipes or something, you probably have near the same number linear feet. You gotta go by everybody's house. You gotta.
Correct.
So I mean.
That is correct. So, so turn left or turn right is going to be the same.
And that's, that's the majority of the bill, it looks like. I mean, somehow the lift stations look cheap compared to laying the pipe.
That's correct. So an extra lift station or two is not going to significantly change the numbers. You're not going to see a five or $10 million reduction in the cost of the project because you eliminate a lift station or two.
Are all the lift stations the same size? Are they all the same price or like very, but their, their depth changes or?
But in the final design, that'll be determined, but right now they're all considered to be essentially the same except for the master lift station at. The southeast corner.
I mean, you must have figured out how deep they need to be just with the current routing, how they're all about the same depth or nothing?
They're all about the same depth, yes.
This one question I have for Greg is, so this is a preliminary. Was there any mistakes found after the plan in this plan?
I'm.
Mistakes, errors?
To define a mistake or an error, let me give you an example of, we had some arrows on streets that showed. Essentially a drainage divide, all right, between. Between runs that were interpreted as sewer lines. And two of those were pointed out. One was an actual line. And the other was a drainage divide. So that wasn't accounted for in the quantities. It appears to be a line in the plan sheet.
Okay. I know some of these questions are repetitive. But as kind of mayor, I was, I included in another meeting that some other questions from engineers. And so these are highly repetitive. I'm assuming you might already asked that.
They're the same question.
So the question I think they brought up is that I think they might have been discussed, is that was there a. Something like a lift station located near or in the cemetery?
Over, over towards the cemetery, yes.
Yeah, and that wasn't considered, would that be an error? Or was it a mistake or?
From the aerial photos, I don't see any, any headstones.
Okay.
Okay, so, so final positioning not done at this time.
Okay.
So it's a placeholder. And we wouldn't be putting a lift station in the middle of an active site.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Oh, I have another one unless somebody else has a question. I guess another question is, why was there no reevaluation of existing, existing septic system failure performed as part of the report?
It's not part of the facility planning report.
Okay, that's the answer.
But, but this deal is, we, we were talking about, but did we as a village ever like ask the county how many septic systems have failed or? Have you ever asked them?
I never have any of you ever asked them. Asked the county how many failures? I don't know. They could probably give it to us. We could probably find that out. I will make a note and I will follow up on that, Joe.
Okay, thank you.
Here's a follow-up to Greg. So when we send that, that, that facilities planning report into the L E P A. They do not request. How many septic systems fail or are failing or is that, is that part of a question? Is that part of the report at all?
It is not part of the report at all. No, let me, let me flesh that out.
Okay.
It's not part of the report at all. The, the, the facility planning report went into the financial assistance section. It hasn't gone to the design phase. All right, so. Even the permit design people will not ask that question. What we have done in the past. When a door-to-door survey was done was to ask individuals. Particular questions on the status of their septic system. Most people don't know the answers to these questions. When was the last time it was called? You know, some of the more detailed questions. Now, they'll know if. They've had any problems in the past, but that certainly doesn't identify systems that are about to fail. Or that would fail in the timeframe that it would take to. Have a fully functioning sanitary sewer collection and transport system in place. So, but no, EPA does not ask that question.
Might add to the information in the facility planning report is what I E P A requires. So that's why it's in the format that it's in, so. Okay, we also talked about the construction cost. We had a citizen think our cost estimates were too low. I believe his first estimate, he thought we were low by five million or more. Does that sound right, Kevin? Second estimate he came back with was 2.4 million low. And that's the charts that he sent us a month or a month and a half ago. We talked about that and Greg, would you like to make any comments?
I can. You know, I, I would take issues with his cost estimate. Primarily from the position of, of where his construction occurred. And the quantities that he utilized. The price per foot of materials in place. In an urban environment with traffic control, with a lot of utilities, with a very small quantity is going to be significantly higher. Than if you were laying, in our case, I think we have 46,000 eight-inch pipe, eight-inch, eight-inch sanitary sewer collective pipe. And a lot of the quantities that were provided were significantly less than that. There most certainly is economy of scale. We do also have a pretty healthy contingency on the cost estimates at this point. And that goes beyond the price per foot that we're showing. The, the refinement of that cost estimate would occur with final design, final cost, final. Quantities and then a rea, a reevaluation of costs at that time. Again, this is intended to be a conservative approach. It isn't intended to be a cover every base cost. If, if in fact. The costs are felt to be. That much lower and the village would want a higher contingency, a safer position. You could certainly adopt different costs. You could, you could tell us to bump those up by 25 or 30%. Again, this is our best, best estimate based on recent numbers and recent large-scale numbers for projects. In, in the viability evaluation by I E P A. Um, during the final design and as the project goes to. Be evaluated for grants and loans, um, they would certainly be looking at the same elements. Make sure that, um. You're not going to be surprised when you open this.
Okay, your discussion on the cost portion? Okay, I'm gonna switch back over to the first slide then and hit the stuff from bottom. Number one, the study indicates U S D A rural development affordability guidelines show combined payment for debt and usage. Their average is a hundred and three dollars and twelve cents. Please confirm that the guidelines showing a hundred and three dollars and twelve cents are for sewer only. Affordability guidelines noted do not include potable water, and potable water is a separate cost. And yes, that, that is correct, the water would be a separate cost. Thank you, Greg, confirm that, so. Also, there's a, uh, a point, the study indicates the cost of the share equally across all users. That was a statement I made that's misleading. But I ask if there would be adjustments for higher users of the system, like commercial, industrial, anybody for profit? And our answer is probably, that would be determined by the village when we set up the sewer fee ordinance. How much residents would pay, how much business it would, would pay. So that part is probably, there would be different charges for different users. Next question is indicated in the study, the residents of Prairie View subdivision do not need a collection system. The Prairie View residents paid for the subdivision's collection system when they purchased their lot from the developer. Please confirm that the village intends to share the cost across all residents, a lot of adjustment for major infrastructure. The rented residents have already paid for once. This is the case, please provide justification for this approach, okay, and that was a statement I made. Trying to do the math and figure out how we could charge. People like that less than people that hadn't already paid for part of the collection system. First of all, the homes in Prairie View, every home will need work, most of them will need. Or all of them will need a line come out of the house to the collection system. Whether you have a sand filter or none, so that part still has to be done for all residents. The major collection lines are there and. Greg had some ideas on how we might be able to. Reduce the charges for the Prairie View residents that already have paid for those collection lines. And the math was beyond me, I cannot begin to explain it, uh, Greg, if you would like to add anything here?
We, I, you know, a suggestion. If, if in fact that was the direction of the village, we would look at the number of users there versus the overall system and. Try to. Proportion some costs out of what was going to happen to be done elsewhere in the village. As Mayor said, they will still require a service connection, um, for a connection into the system. That they will also require a lift station presumably at the southwest corner of the village. Of Prairie View, um, to collect their sanitary. Um, and have that be pumped back to the main transport line and then to the main lift station.
From the pipeline, it will be, it, it will be looked at, it may not be easy, but we'll look at it and see what would be fair.
Are, are all the costs for the work that needs to be done in Prairie View in this plan? I mean, cause you know, there's no lines on the map that you guys gave us showing any work in Prairie View, it acts like it's all there. I mean, every house has to be connected, that cost is in here.
There, there are service connection costs for all the houses, and there is the lift station cost.
That's in this plan, right?
Yes, and, and Joe, maybe even a bigger counterpoint is that there is a strong assumption on our part. That the entire collection system that's in place is viable. And accurate and usable.
Yeah, I mean, I think we talked before, we didn't know if there was a T at each house, if you assume there wasn't a T at each house, that seems like it'd be much more expensive. So I mean, is that the cost you put in this plan, is that you got the main line and put a T brick down?
There's no, there's no cost for cutting the line, there's a cost for a connection. But we'd have to investigate and see exactly what was done. Early on, and part of the plans that we worked with and, and were done, were the as builds. But there's no mention of a connection. In any place.
But there's some cost for Prairie View work in here, that's correct.
I got a quick question. So what you're talking about here, it's, it's basically gonna be reducing the cost potentially for Prairie View subdivision. Which will lay more cost on the rest of the town, who's already complaining about the cost. As it is. So it's just gonna make it that much worse.
But, you know, yeah, I'm in Prairie View, please, I mean. Already, right, so why shouldn't we go up for the?
No, I don't, I don't disagree with that, I'm just.
Yeah.
Overall, because I guess the question we have is, so if you get into that and you find that there are laterals that are, that are not imaged. Does that just go against? People that are connecting, want to do it right there, and they pay for the repairs?
I, I think there's still a lot of costs at Prairie View, I mean, all there is is the main collection pipes running down the backyard, right? All the work, all the, you know, a lot of the costs is running the line to the houses.
No. The connection, the connection going from the road to the house, if you were to have to pay for that, it may be five thousand dollars, six thousand dollars. Put that line in out front, we're talking.
Well, your argument is too, but for people in Prairie View, that's the third year.
I'm just looking at, I guess, you know, I was gonna bring it up later. My opinion, I know we went back and forth and do we put the silver vote, we may not put the silver vote, I guess my question to the board is gonna be. Are we looking towards putting the silver vote, this will do, ultimately, we know this is gonna fail. And I think we've spent way more time.
I think it's too soon to decide, and I don't think it's a vote for this, this for next year. I don't think we're ready, I mean, if we decide if we wanted to design plan, that portion of it. And then, once we know actual costs, and we present that information, I think that could potentially be ready for a vote.
But so this plan that we actually used to actually doing that has cost a hundred and forty thousand dollars, how much does the next?
No, and I get that, but I guess the question, if it is, it's that next phase of design, are we talking a million dollars?
We're waiting for that.
It's expensive.
So to get into a million dollars to look at the end, then to put it out and it will fail.
That's where the next grant will pay for, the design plan, so this is what we have to decide too, that's the next E P A grant. Is for designing construction.
So if we get that grant.
That's five million dollars.
If we get that grant and we use it towards design and then we do not move forward, do we have to repay that money?
This is what we have to talk about.
Is if we don't have to repay it, okay, but if we have to repay it.
Right. We're not, right.
And, and, and honestly.
We find out. And?
And, and once you sign that commitment letter, you are committed to.
If we don't construct, okay.
And, or, or, or repay.
So I think really, you need to find out a good estimate on what the design is going to cost. And then it's like a no, go no vote from there.
And that's what I mean, I think that's where, if we're planning on putting this out to the vote, that's where we have to stop until it goes to the vote.
There is a way though, that we could, depending on the cost of the design plan, is that the village need to pay that. And see what it is. The final cost, and then we can submit for the five million to the E P A for construction and get free perks for the design plan. If we think. That's kind of how we want it, if we want to really see if this is gonna work for Hudson, like we're this far already.
I'm, I'm old fiver, and I always have been, but the more and more I keep hearing of, of. Honestly, I don't think there's been enough information put out to the town, I don't think the townspeople really understand. The differences, you know, I keep getting the comment up, mine works just fine, mine works just fine. But how long does it work fine for, you know, they say twenty years, twenty years is not a feasible number to say how long a septic system runs. Mine's been in the ground for sixty years. But there is a time for it, it will fail, at some point, it is going to fail. You know, uh, I've reached out to a local contractor and now they put septic systems in, they're looking fifteen to twenty five thousand dollars to put it in. If we do not move forward now, and I'm saying this so that everybody out here hears this, if we don't look at moving forward and we wait and we put it on pause. Because the rest of the town doesn't want to do it right now, the day is gonna come here soon. For what I consider the old section of town, which I live in it, they are gonna start failing at a rapid rate. At that point. How do you ever move forward on a septic or on a sewer? Because if you pay twenty five thousand dollars and can't afford it and have to take out a loan to do that. You do, you do, and next thing you know, then we say, oh, now we're gonna put this sewer, now you get to pay for sewer and the loan on your septic system that you just did. We're at the beginning phase where things could potentially start failing in the next ten years.
So that's what people that are putting in new houses right now are doing too, so somebody, somebody's gonna do that either way.
No, and I get that. And I understand that, but those costs are at least somewhat wrapped in your house, but you know, a lot of people that have gotten up and spoken have said, I'm on limited income. I can't afford that, so can they afford a hundred dollars a month for a loan and a hundred and fifty dollars for sewer? You know, your other option is, is you don't do anything and we end up condemning your house, because you can't live there without a septic system. So that's kind of why I would like to know, how many within the last ten years or twenty years, when did that happen? I'm kind of like data, I like data that says, oh, this is why we're doing this. The need is there, hey, this is what's happening to our homes, and we talked about, about that. Why do we need it, like, hey, McLean County Health Department, do they have data, do they have? Do we have the data to do that? And, and it's even the other thing, you know, when we went down and met with Benworth, you know, I, I don't remember who all was there that day. But you know, they talked about.
You and me.
They talked about the issues that they have treating sewage now because of the amount of medications that people are taking nowadays versus twenty years ago. I don't, people, you know, people understand that medication doesn't stick with you about, it flows through you and goes into your septic tank. It kills off the bacteria in your septic tank, if you don't treat your septic tank, your septic tank is going to premature your system. So what might have been sixty years for my house, because the first forty years I was there, I mean, my parents owned it for most of it. We used to, we took medications, you know, um, all the cancer treatments, cancer swims through, it gets into your septic tank and kills everything off. How many of those are going to, all of a sudden, we're gonna start getting premature failures because of it? I mean, I went to Walgreens the other day and had to spend forty five minutes because there were so many people in mine, never seen it that way. You know, and Benworth started to see that issue, and they're starting to get mandated from the state. I keep going back to work because I'm in favor of it, but I don't know that there's enough education out there that we're ever gonna get with it. And I hate to spend three quarters of a million dollars to design it. With the net fee, or have it sit on a shelf, which will never get picked up again. Sorry, that's my.
You mean aside, like, vote no vote?
Yeah. Because like I said, if we spend, if we say, okay, we're gonna do the design, we're gonna spend three quarters of a million. If we don't move forward at the end of that with construction and it goes onto a shelf, it will never move forward. It will die on the shelf, because like I said, what will happen is it will start getting failures. And then it will be a portion of town, which I'm just gonna say, the portion of town that wants sewer. Let's say, well, we pay for septic, we don't want it, as is Prairie View and the north end subdivision. And then it's gonna go down this to where, you know, we've all replaced it and then the north end's gonna start failing, well, then they're gonna want it, well, everybody else down here is still good. It'll be that cycling phase that will never, never come to an end. Until EPA steps in and forces it, and when they do.
Didn't we get a report about who, we're obviously on the permits for septic early on, right? Didn't we have a report like that?
We do not have an M P D S or a, an E P A permit for grants.
The permit, we got a permit, but was it from the health department of all the permits for septic?
John, John Hurst shot, sent me all that reported to you guys, but it's all raw data. There's no, he doesn't say, hey, they don't even keep records of, they just got new permit, more permits, but it doesn't show. Then you can tell me if I'm wrong here, I could.
Oh, there's like a new house or a replacement.
Yeah, but it doesn't say, this one failed and this is a permit for that, it could be just like, oh yeah, we're building a new house down. Here, oh, my house was built in ninety six, a new permit was issued for Pett's wife.
You're right, it's not gonna give a, I think it's just a little bit of preliminary to look at.
And I was looking through that, Linda, I'm looking, I couldn't make heads or tails out of it because it did say it is all raw data.
Yeah, it's just a permit, it's a permit for who knows what.
Because the lower, the lower amount of septic in the older section of town that have been replaced. Only means that's how many more are coming with, with a dam breaks.
Say that again.
The less that have been replaced in the old section of town, where we're talking houses that are sixty, sixty five years old. The less that have been replaced today means the more you're gonna have coming in the near future. Would that make sense?
Well, yeah, I mean, you're saying they've never been replaced yet, they're old, so they're gonna get to show up eventually.
It's gonna show up, and I think because a lot of the old section was built around the time, same time frame. It's gonna come pretty fast, and when it does, that's when, like I said, it would start that revolving, no one's ever gonna wanna move forward.
But so, so there must be data on this, right, in the, of, of towns where everything's failed or something, I, I mean. And what's that, seventy years, or is it eighty years, or what, I mean, we don't know.
We got to find data for our town, because the soil test would be different for Hudson than it would be for any other.
Cause it goes on per catch, you know, if you have an, an area of Hudson, it doesn't per very well, it just meets regulations to build. Those septic systems are going to fail potentially sooner than sections that perp a lot. There, there's so much to it to try, to try to understand, and I only know some of it because I used to solve. I know some of the ins and outs.
So you'll have to compile like multiple parts of data and make your best. Yes, definitely.
And like I said, I'm on board with it, I've said it from the beginning, I think it's a, I think it's a great idea, I think it'll help the village for the long run. I know there's a lot of people that. That aren't just aren't informed, I mean, I guarantee if you took a poll, how many people actually pump their septic systems, which you're supposed to do, I think it's like every two to five years. You're probably gonna have a, a large amount that say they've never, they don't even know where the tank lives, they've never had that. And the longer you wait, the solid built up and it damages that field, and once the damage to the field's there, there's no way to fix it without replacing it. You know, and that's why me, I pump it every two years, just because I know about it and I've had to deal with it. But I guarantee most don't probably know where there's even are in the yard. I bet there's a lot down in Prairie View that have probably never done it. Because they figure it's a brand new house, brand new septic system, I don't like to touch it. Sorry, that's just mine.
Yeah, so do you have any suggestions on how we can educate the community? Have more meetings or what, what, I mean, I mean.
You know, one of my thoughts was is putting, putting together, putting together information on septic systems and how they function and how they fail. And, and things that do cause them to fail, and putting it out the quill, and maybe you're running it, and the quill once a month for the next several months. Hopefully, everybody's seeing it, getting an understanding. And understand what a septic system actually does.
I'm sure the Illinois Rural something Association already has a nice whole family with that.
And there probably is, yeah. But like I said, one thing kind of teed off to me is when we were down there and Tim had talked about how they are starting to roll C D F ticket medications coming through the sewage. And are having, starting to have pour issues, and there's more E P A guidelines coming on how they can treat that stuff because of it.
Okay, I will follow up with, I think I'm the health department, and see if I can get others on raw data that you have. For finding out how many failures we've had, and also if they have patents available, we could use to get information out of the residents. It is important that people understand that, I know when I bought my house, I didn't, didn't have a clue about it.
And I've had some people ask me, and when I've explained it to them. And I've had some people ask me and when I've explained it to them. They're, they're like, they're never, never do it. Never do that they should have it. They just thought it would. Just keep working. And I can say, you know what, my, when my parents lived in the house back in the seventies. They didn't have it for several years because they didn't understand. And we have a lot of people that have come and moved out here from home to normal that have always been on sewer and never been on septic.
Okay, great discussion.
Federal EPA has a real good website on septic systems.
Who has it?
Federal USC PA.
Okay. So we get information off of there too. Thank you. Getting back to Bob's question, the next question, collection system options, there are options. And coaches included in the study. The gravity option A and low pressure and gravity option B were included. Did not find routing options for the flexion system. I think, Greg, go ahead.
Well, we, we looked at what appeared to be the most logical economical layout. Certainly are other options. And again, that's a component of the final design. If you start to try to minimize depth and layout linear footage. So for example, if we had a parallel run, and this was pointed out on, and I think he discussed this on Broadway. We had a parallel run that we put, that made collector down Broadway and then had runs down to the back sides of the alleys. Those runs could eliminate the Broadway section on one side or the other and just be larger beeper lines. But again, if you're looking at that at final design, try to make it as economical as possible.
Okay, the next point, the collection system uses five lift stations that are master. Many communities larger did not utilize as many lift stations. We've talked about that and how that can change. So I think we've already discussed that point. Same thing on question one, two.
But it's their opinion that shouldn't change. And he said the layout they put in there is the layout that they think is best. And we don't know any better to tell them something else, right?
So we don't have the expertise.
Right, so we wouldn't tell them to go do something else because we don't know too. So I mean, that, that, it's not going to change. It's going to stay the same.
If we ask, if we tell EPA or whoever does the design work to consider that as an option to run. The fewer lift stations to run from east to west, to use the topography and analyze whether or not a line alongside the ditch is feasible or not. Then that would be considered as part of the show to the final design.
But they've already done that in this plan, right? And they decide.
No, this is not the final design. I don't know how many times I really need to emphasize that.
But so you, you didn't consider going along the creek even then, you say?
No, no, we didn't because that would add to the cost.
Okay, so you did consider it, but because it's not best case scenario based on what they know as engineers. They didn't do the plan that way because to them, it doesn't make sense.
So did you consider it or not?
It, it, it's so much deeper, Joe, that I have to, I have to.
What do you think I consider?
I have to take the numbers. I have to take the numbers and say, okay, based on the elevation differences. For us to be below the creek and be able to put it adjacent to the creek, we'd be six feet deeper than we needed to be. But by, by generally looking at the topography, it appears that that's what's going to occur.
Are you saying you'd be six feet deeper at the start of the collection system? I'm trying to understand.
No, it, it would be six foot deeper to run along the creek.
I, I just don't understand. We can talk after the meeting maybe because, I mean, you're saying, you're saying if you, if you use the topography, it's going to get deeper. And to me, it sounds like it should get deeper if you go against the topography.
It's not true. It's not true. Again, because, because the slope that's required on sewer line is, is not this. It's not this. It's barely perceptible.
Okay.
And so to go from here to there in the opposite direction, right?
I could talk to you after.
Joe, like this, so if, if this is two sides of town. And with the elevation, the elevation drops like this, you can't start a sewer line up here. They have to start a sewer.
So it's at the start, that's what I just happened, is it the start or the end? And I thought it was at the end.
It'd be one or the other.
Yeah.
Yeah, to have, otherwise, there's a maximum slope that you put on these lines. And if it's deeper than that, it causes you problems, maintenance problems.
There's a large drop in curvy and somehow they ran them. Maybe they got really deep like you're saying, I don't know.
So back to your original question, did you consider it? I'm not sure, I'm not sure at this point what your answer is, so.
We, we, without putting a calculator to it and doing design. We looked at the elevation changes across the village and decided that working in a waterway. Or adjacent to a waterway or having to condemn some homes was not in the best interest of the village. So we did consider.
So back to Joe's original question, so this is the best plan that we were given? Based upon what he gave us, what's the best plan? Even though it's not final, I know it's not final. I heard that many times, but that was the best, we considered it, we looked at it. And we thought this was the best at the time.
Correct. Or is this stage of the project?
Great, I have a question.
Yes.
If we didn't get the grant for the study, is this phase a normal part of the sewer project? Like phase one in this planning report?
Yes. Oh, yes. It's, it's necessary.
Okay.
It's necessary. EPA will not let you move forward without having done this portion of the work.
So whether or not there was a grant, they still want to see this part?
Yes, yes. And, and if you look on the listing of phase one there, all right. The facility planning report, those elements that are listed in the villages, phase one, are all a necessary component of evaluation. So in order to be considered for any sort of financing, you would have to have looked at the economic viability of the project. You'd have to have a reasonable cost estimate based on the stage that you're at, you know, what else is on there. Yeah, you, you. Benefits and drawbacks of each option, estimated cost, construction cost for each option. Cost to the village during construction phase, annual operating costs. Your, your EPA is demanding that that happen. And again, this is the necessary first step.
And ballpark figures, we're looking at the final design costing upwards of three quarters of a million to maybe several million dollars. Is that correct?
David, that's a pretty broad range. I don't know that I'd want to commit to what that cost is in a public forum, pulling it out of the air.
Just, just so everybody's aware, we didn't make that part of phase one because we don't want to have to pay for it. And so that's why there's a lot of questions on, you know, what's the best design, so. Okay, moving on back to the list.
David, if I can interrupt for a second. So I think we have fifteen plan sheets. And I think I've mentioned this before, there are fifteen plan sheets. Involved with the facility planning report. A number of those are really superficial, surrounding property owners who might be willing to develop. Number of different things. The level of detail that Hudson would have for a set of final plans would be probably somewhere between a hundred and fifty and a hundred and eighty sheets. That would be a permissible set. So this isn't an engineer's desire to add more sheets. EPA requires that level of detail. So each of the manholes would have pipes coming in and out. There would be elevations for each one of those. There would be a rim elevation. There would be slopes. There'd be horizontal positions. Different dimensions. You'd have all the elements that would be required. So right now, the assumption was that. Costs in the alleyway are significantly less than costs in an asphalted street with curb and gutter. That, that's another engineering by observation. That, that's a truism. You can build in an alley less expensive than you can build in a street. So that's the reason that the alleys were selected over the streets.
Okay, next point was number three, the collection system is being routed through the vault portion of the cemetery. Please advise all this as possible. And I think we agreed that it would not go through the cemetery.
That's correct.
Yes. Number four, a large number of lots are served through sewers installed in alleys and easements. The alley right of ways exist, temporary easements will likely be more required for installation. And maintaining a sewer system in the alleys will be much more difficult than sewers rather than roadways.
There's, that's not true. You know, maintaining a sewer system in an alley is a lot easier. If you have to dig up anything, I'd just assume dude in an alley. If you have to come out and soft cut an asphalt street or a concrete street or even an oil and chip street. That's more expensive than digging in an alley and putting gravel back in and walking away from it. Bill, would that be true?
What'd you say, Jim?
Working in an alley with the gravel surface is much less expensive than digging up an oil and chip street or a asphalt street.
I think the citizen complaints are going to be phenomenal because Denny, right now, working on, over here on West Street. We've already had complaints. He's putting in extra drain pipe. And I mean, you've got one and a half lanes for traffic now and he's taken up like three feet to dig. Put in drain pipes and fill it. We've had complaints already that we don't have enough barricades set up that, you know, somebody's going to drive into the trench. Well, Denny's covering the trenches as soon as he digs them. I can't imagine digging up the chip and tar and asphalt surfaces, how, how people are going to complain. I mean, they're complaining, they're going to complain about their alleyways too, but not near as much as they would the streets.
One of the things that we did in the community previously was, and again, placing lines in the alleyways that had no wearable surface. Is we backfilled those with gravel. We bedded the pipe. Punched the pipe, put sand over the pipe and then had gravel go in over the top. Did minimal compaction, graded it for travel and then left, I don't know, sixty tons, a hundred tons of gravel. For the village. As the alley settled over time, the village was able to go get gravel and regrade the top surface. And that reduced the cost significantly because the contractor wasn't responsible for a long-term settlement issue. And had no asphalt or oil and chip work that needed to be done. And there'll be, there'll be plenty of locations in Hudson where it'll be necessary to go across streets. Just like you're saying, Denny's having to do, but minimizing those minimizes the overall cost.
Okay, number five, there appears to be revolting sewers. They've removed would reduce the cost. We talked about that. One was Broadway and McLean. And I believe, Greg, do you remember?
McLean Mayor was the symbols only, Kevin, that you were asking about. There were not connections. There were just, again, those were symbols, all right? And then on Broadway. That was what I was talking about, where we might be able to combine the sewers. In an alley run and not have them run right down Broadway. And again, we'd have to look at that to see whether we could make a connection one side or the other.
Okay, so those are the items that we discussed in the meeting last week. And we've discussed them again tonight in public. I think Greg and Russell have got a much better relationship and are able to talk about the differences now. And in the futures, if we continue and more things come up, I think they have a good relationship. And I think things will go, discussions will go much better. We did try and contact the EPA to verify. About the, if we do the design, pay for that and we get reimbursed, we submit the grant and the EPA did not call back last week. We talked about it tonight, but we, we still need to, go ahead, Greg.
I, I, I don't need to interrupt, but I did hear from them on Monday.
Okay.
All right, and had two, a Monday discussion and a Tuesday discussion. And the way that their grant process works. And I, I think I mentioned this earlier when Lynn asked, all right, is the design. If the village pays for design on its own, it would not be part, would not be eligible. To be part of the five million dollar grant. Would not. But it would be eligible for the I E P A loan that would be taken out after. Even though the expenses occurred well before the loan was finalized and, and referred before the grant was finalized. So that's the clarification there. Their paperwork for the Unsewered Communities Construction Grant Program. Kind of indicated that it would be combined. Well, what they explained to me was it was combined in the construction. Grant and the loan process, when that's all packaged together. And they recognized that for a new system. The maximum grant amount of five million dollars, if that were awarded, you'd still need to have a loan. So, so that's how they accommodate that. So. And then having the design. So Unsewered Communities Construction Grant Program is a competitive grant program. I believe they had six awards last round. They're not doing, they're not accepting any new applications at this point. Until after the first of the year. They are telling me that, that they're expecting a lot more applications this round. And so with it being competitive, the closer you are to being ready to go to construction. The more likely you are to receive those grant funds.
When you say it's competitive, are, is, are the. You know, not rules is the right word, but I mean, are, are, are what they use to evaluate public, I mean, what kind of things are in there? I mean, is it related to income level and stuff that we're going to have a problem with or?
No, no, that's, that's a D C O program. So, so that doesn't factor into this, Joe. But if the village is applying for the construction grant program. And is at the stage that we're at right now, you would be less competitive than somebody who had a permit.
Do you have a permit? Do they have to do the whole, we have to design the whole thing?
Okay, so the, so the villages or towns that have got the grant, are they getting the five million?
I did ask that question and it, and it varies. There are some awardees that are receiving the full amount, all right? And, and that's, that's always a question from an engineer's perspective because sometimes they slice the pie up. Even skinnier and try to make. because sometimes they slice the pie up even skinnier and try to make everybody happy. D C E O does that all the time. Uh, you know, on a four hundred thousand dollar maximum grant, you typically get something less than that. But the woman that I spoke to today on that specific question said, no, that there are communities that get the full five million. But that's because they're looking at a significantly higher amount, and they recognize that, um, that they're going to be in the loan program too. They're trying to help as much as possible. Uh, Joe, some of the loan forgiveness that they offer up is dependent on income levels and poverty rates. So, so the answer is yes for the loan, um, and then there's further considerations.
So there were six, six awardees you said this year?
I believe that's true.
Can we talk to those people and just ask them how much their design cost? And I, I don't want time to do this, I'm sorry. So I'm not offering you to work, but...
Greg, can you get me to contact the EPA so I can talk to them and see if I can get the villages that were awarded?
I can, I can get you the list of the awardees.
It's, it's probably on their website someplace, but trying to navigate EPA websites, I don't see, so...
It could be an early...
If you do that, that'd be great. I'll try and make some contacts, and if somebody wants to help me, that'd be great. So... You can give me that list, I'll, I'll make some contacts and see if we can find out, you know, why some of that, the full amount, why some think they didn't.
Yeah, just the full cost of their system and like how much the design cost for that. I mean, like all these costs would be very good on...
Yeah, some of the, some of the awardees were doing an extension of their system. And so they did not have a, a full need, because I, I asked that question. So if they got two point three billion, maybe, maybe it's because they asked for two point three.
Did they say how many applied? Did you say that, Erin?
I'm sorry?
Did they say how many applied?
Last, last year, I believe the number was around twenty.
Okay.
It's, you know, it's, it's typically three or four times the number. And then they kind of took a break during, I don't know, COVID timeframe here. And they're expecting, again, based on conversations, um, based on the number of inquiries they've had, you know, a lot, a lot, a greater amount of people.
So six out of twenty got money?
That's correct. And those are good odds, those are good odds, no, those are, those are great odds.
You know, it's something like, we don't know what the situation of all of this, so I don't wanna do my best to work this. You know, like, sure, you play your grant if you can. That's what their needs were for that grant.
Joe, each, each of those were...
What, what is it? I didn't, I know you're not that full, and I'm just, I understand that.
That each, each of those applications probably had varying degrees of completeness. And we see that all the time in grant applications. There's a number of them that simply don't include all the necessary components, okay? So if ten out of twenty simply didn't have everything that they were supposed to have, that's not necessarily an indication as to how difficult it is to get funds.
But, but they, do they have like a certain size bucket of money and they spent it all in those six?
Yes, yes.
I mean, so you, you're never gonna get four or more than around six because they don't have so much money over here.
The, the, the program is budgeted to have twenty million a year. So, you know, twenty divided by five, you're, you're only gonna see four maximum amounts if in fact they get the full amount. So...
Yeah, are there any additional questions for Greg or about the meeting we had?
I, I have, I have some more, I have at least one, I have four, I have a major, uh, discipline for us. We've said before that Downs and Lexington's were forced to move their sewers, are you? So do we know when that happened? Did somebody come in and drop a lot of money on them? Do we have an idea? I mean, I mean, if they, if EPA comes and says you must move the sewers, and we say, hey, we don't have any money, I mean, do they kill us more?
I, I don't know. I don't know what the financial side of it was.
I'm coming up with lots of action I can share, but I wonder if we can ask Downs and Lexington, you know, what happened, maybe nobody remembers, I guess, I don't know how long ago those were.
Down has been over ten years, I think.
I mean, I wonder if they could say, well, yeah, they made us move the sewers, but yeah, they gave us ten million to do it or anything.
I'll see if I can find it.
I, can I jump in there, Dave? Now, Lexington got, uh, money through a line item in the federal budget to cover their sewers, and like hitting the lottery. So I know that's where their, the biggest chunk of their sewer funding came from.
I'm just, I'm just saying that.
Quite understand everything, would you repeat that?
Yeah, uh, Lexington received money for their sewers from the federal government. Their, uh, excuse me, congressman obtained money on the federal budget, a line item grant, to pay to Lexington for their sewers. So getting that money is kind of like winning the lottery. It's not particularly probable, especially in today's day and age. But that's how they got the money when they did their sewers. I think that covered a substantial portion of their construction cost.
Okay, so it's probably the same process that the McLean County Land Bois trip goes through as far as contacting senators and representatives in DC for political grants for, for grants for different things. So, you know, was it substantial, was it like half of?
I, I don't remember, Dave.
Okay, I'll see if I can find out. I don't know if Spencer was around, the mayor of Lexington was around at that time, but I don't know whether he was the mayor.
The other question I have is, oh, to your question, just thought of this. So how many sewer systems are, you know, actually, how many voluntarily, like we are, we're not forced, being forced here? How many, how many municipalities volunteered to get a sewer system without being forced to?
That would be a question that I was trying to ask EPA. You know, and maybe they can look at, say, yeah, all six of these were volunteers, or five of the six were forced.
Yeah.
You know, I, I don't know. So...
Next question. So I saw in the plan, there was a fifteen percent contingency for stuff. I mean, is that contingency, other things I saw on the plan, is that contingency for things like, uh, there's stuff about, you know, extensive soil borings were neat, were be needed to make, to, to figure out how expensive it would be, and, and high groundwater would be a problem. If that contingency is not for that stuff, probably, the plan would even go higher if those things were bad.
The, the contingency there goes for construction, but some of those elements that you mentioned, the soil borers, are essentially part of the design. So you'd be looking at that to be able to determine what sort of conditions you'd be dealing with.
You'd, you'd figure out that we had high groundwater too in the design phase.
Yes, or, or, or that there was, you know, again, the pick on the creek route, alright? That there was eight foot of very fine-grained sand down there. And that when you excavated that, you'd have to drive sheet pile to be able to hold that back to have a trench. As opposed to hard clay with no groundwater where you'd be able to construct a market.
So you'd find those in the design phase, and then the cost of the plan would go up probably because of that? Or is that covering the contingency you think?
It's, I mean, it's kind of covered unless the whole world's...
Right, 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 to recover your salt pockets, okay.
Yes. And, and let me kind of fall back on your other question. Basically, the way it, it occurs with a community, um, and you said somebody comes in and drops a pot of money. Well, before that, somebody comes in and says, you're doing something that's wrong, alright? And that we're going to, you're in violation, alright? And that it falls back on the village. Um, so then what the process, the way the process works is that they attempt to put you under what's called a consent order. The consent order is a timeline for compliance, for you to get back out of violation. If that doesn't work, um, you have personal consultations with the attorney general's office. I was doing that this morning with me. And then once it starts on that legal end, and Pat gets more involved with the process, um, you enter what's called the escalator to compliance stage, to where you, you are now on a track where you're going to do what you need to do to resolve the problem, or the attorney general office, attorney general's office starts to impose civil fines. And those civil fines are something that you try to avoid. Um, this raises your competitive ratings with EPA if you're under any sort of duress with the agency or with the attorney general's office. So you move up the ladder as far as being one of the, receiving funding sooner and receiving the maximum funding if you're trying to do the right thing.
So another, there's a comment opposed to a question, and we've talked a lot about the hundred and three dollars a month, right? That that's, I really, I, I hope, I hope if we, you know, if we continue with this, we don't see that as our target. I mean, I'd like to, I hope our target's about fifty dollars a month. You know, so I mean, I think that means we need a lot more grant money somehow. You know, because we only talked about the hundred and three so far, so hopefully, hopefully our target's much lower if we start doing some of that. No, I was going to, but I didn't, I could, I, I could do that. That I can do at work, while I, while I think I'm doing it. Great.
Mayor, um, in my conversations with EPA today, I asked if they had a, if EPA had an affordability criteria, alright? Because, Joe, that hundred and three dollars is real development's affordability criteria, and EPA does not have enough. So there's, there's no target as far as EPA's concerned.
I would, I think you guys saw my emails, and one of the emails stated that my person I know in North Rommel that had a five thousand gallon or five thousand gallon water, uh, sewer bill, their total combined monthly cost, and this is as of May of twenty-three, was thirty-six bucks. So the, and then the property tax component, all that for binware. So their house, that's probably another, well, that probably brings them up to about fifty bucks total. So I think whatever we decide, think about it, that's a comparison. I think that's, I didn't do Wilmington, I don't know, but that is...
They're, they're not paying for debt right now, that's strictly just their...
That is, right, exactly, because they already have their sewer system, exactly. Same thing Wilmington, subdivisions, they're doing it, is, is existing in that. But I thought that's kind of a good benchmark, hey, who do, we don't have sewer? What, what do other places, you know, pay? What does Lexington pay? I don't know. What does Downs, they got it, but new, their system. But I just thought, sharing that with the board, that would be something to say, oh, they paid thirty-six bucks for five thousand gallons of water or sewage.
And that was just for the sewage bill?
That's not water, that's not water, that is only sewage, and then you add another, like you add another hundred and twenty-five bucks on top of that, so it averages out to about fifty bucks a month, if you're including the property tax.
Right, okay. Okay, do we have any final questions about the, the discussion, the questions or topics in the meeting?
My, my only last question is where do we go from here and what would the cost be for the next step? We've already kind of talked about that, but I don't think we have an answer.
Okay, my, my recommendation, and I was gonna bring it up later, but I'm gonna recommend we set up a work session to figure out what our options are, go ahead from here, including, you know, shell what we got, or pay for the design, or see what kind of grants we could get. Just discuss that and, and try and figure out what our options are to the head.
Yeah, what I was kind of thinking is that we didn't talk about an assessment evaluation. I think we've had four meetings with the public. Okay, what are their thoughts? What is their feedback?
And that can be part of our work session.
I mean, I can say it now. I mean, from my perspective, it's pretty obvious that, I mean, I know they mentioned something about the percentage. I would say that's ninety-five percent are closed from all the email and the public comment at the meetings. It's obvious to, that's, you might have different opinions, but that is my perception of being at all four meetings.
That, that it's too expensive, or they don't want it at all, or what?
Opposition to sewer.
At all?
For a variety of reasons, yeah.
Okay. I think it was quite that, I think, the, because...
Because we're allowed to say it, and like, they hide it.
There was a neighbor of mine that wanted, I mean, he told me, it was down the street. He said, Kevin, I'm all for it, I'm all for it. And he saw me outside this last week, he said, oh, I'm not for it anymore because I don't know how much it costs.
Yeah.
So I mean, it's, it's like that, and that is, I think that...
The cost component is still variable, though. That's the, that's the point. So any of that concern of costs, we still don't know. If we agree, we need to try to figure out if it's lower, and then that might, uh, work for some of the people that the cost was a concern.
I don't, well, I mean, that's a different opinion. From my opinion, from what I heard, I mean, you're entitled to your opinion, then of course, but from what my perception, from the conversations I had with individuals, from the email that we had, is like, no. It's like basically, I mean, there's kind of three factors, and I kind of sum it up this way. The need, the need of the sewer. Currently, we have a need. I talked to Aaron, he talked about how the failing, I understand his concern on that, but currently, we do not have a need. And the second is the design, the plan. The final design, I know I heard Craig saying final design, I heard him on that. But basically, this is what we presented to the public, we said it four times, right? This is the plan that we had. So now I'm saying, there's different costs, it's supposed, it could be more, it could be less, it could be funding brand, we don't know. That's my concern. And all four, no matter what, what we, we think up here, ninety-five percent, in my opinion, ninety percent opposition, that's, to me, that's a no-go. But you don't have to say what you guys think, but that's part of our discussion in public forum. That's what my perception is. No, just to fill up the table, not saying we won't get it in the future, but not this plan, not this design, not the cost.
Okay. Anybody feel we want to do a work session, or do you want to give your opinions right now?
I need a work session.
Okay, I'd like to see us have a work session. Work session is a part of the meeting. Anybody from the community is welcome to attend. What, uh, about two weeks, and it could be in the quill, about two weeks up to night. Get it in the quill and everything. Today is the third, they would put it on Tuesday, October seventeenth. Supposed to be you all be available, Sarah and Allison. About this, uh, three available then.
With David?
October seventeenth, Tuesday, seven o'clock.
I've got some meetings, but I'll just find out early.
Oh, that's right, you get required a meeting.
And what is the, so what are we gonna do on this?
So we're gonna talk about our options on moving forward, which would, one of the options is solid.
Okay.
Yeah.
So where, for me, it's what we have some components of information that we're gathering right now. And I think that's gonna help me more make my decision. I, I've talked to a number of people who are for it, outside of the meeting. So I think it still deserves, we put this much time and effort into it. We really have to look at everything involved with it. And I feel like there's still some questions left unanswered that I want my brain settled on, so I can say yes or no.
Okay. But compared to that, there's an economic term called sunk cost.
Yeah.
It's basically, you're, you're, you do what you did, you got a sewer city by great team, and they were, we're done. And we're not gonna be putting more money into it.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, I see that.
That's why I.
What is everybody else's assessment of the meetings? The public meetings?
I'll let the trustees to talk now if they want to, if they want to wait a couple of weeks. I'll, I'll give my opinion and everybody else.
I mean, I think, I think it's been mostly negative, but that, that doesn't mean. That's what everybody thinks, right? The negative people just show up, right? So it's hard, it's, it's not a valid poll to bowl the room where everybody's complaining, right?
And there's been some misunderstanding of where we're at and what our goal is right now.
Yeah, but so it's still like a, going, a non-binding referendum where you ask people, right? We can, we can do that, and Aaron thinks that fails, I, I don't know what you think, the percentages would lie, you know. But it comes down to, you know, if it's ninety-five percent no, then you don't do it. If it's eighty percent no, you don't do it. If it's seventy percent no, you don't do it. Somewhere it's like, well, we can do it. Yeah, yeah, that, that's the other problem with the poll, is that, you know, if you only have three hundred people show up to that election because it's raining outside. And if the three hundred upset people, you know, you're, again, your poll's wrong. But it would be non-binding, but, but I mean. E- e- even doing that, I mean, I don't know what, I don't know what the referendum would be, we have to come up with a really good description to your point that. Someone's point, maybe Aaron's point, that we have to really inform people. We have to have a really good referendum, like maybe we have to have complete costs, right? I mean, you can't just go in there and say, do you want a sewer? That's silly. You have to say, do you want a sewer for X dollar a month, blah, 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 we don't know any of that.
Right, and that's, that's what, I mean, I know it's not a final design, but these are the costs that we presented to the public. And based upon this plan, where the night is preliminary, not final, I know.
I would think.
Is that, is that basically, here you go, I mean, this is where the cost. And there's people that said, I don't want to do it because it's in my backyard, blah, blah, blah. You know, there's a lot of reasons why, I don't want to accept, but, I mean, sentiment, if it was like the fifty or sixty of, it's kind of like, hey, if it's. And even if the cost was like in the seventy-five bucks, right? You know, even then, I would say, hey, we can even, hey, you can entertain that idea, and we're just, but again. We presented the, we presented, and if there's misunderstanding, then it's on us for the misunderstandings. But we presented this four times to the public, and this is what we have, and this is their sentiment. I mean, I mean, and then with the referendum part of it, binding or not. And absolutely, I mean, I'm being transparent, you guys know exactly what I'm thinking. This is what my thought process is, I'm learning stuff every month, week. I didn't know the options and the plans. That this is the thought, this is a nice way to discuss it with the engineer to understand, hey, this is. Now I know as of October third, what I didn't know back on February eighteenth. But this is where we're at, in my opinion.
I'll go ahead for one, two cents worth, then I think a lot of people are concerned, don't want to know because of the price. Now, the hundred dollars a month's target is, in my opinion, is too high. And we need to work to get somewhere, maybe around fifty, see if that's feasible. And I think a lot more people would be very supportive of it if we can get the cost down. And as far as your comment, a lot of people have said, we don't need, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. It's kind of brave, you know, if you don't wait to change the oil in your car when your car quits running. New maintenance, it's, it's not a good analogy.
I even, people are taking out, sorry, I interrupted you, Dave. I apologize, no, I, I interrupted you.
Okay, you know, it's, it's, obviously, most of our stuff is working. We don't know when it's gonna break. And if it's gonna break, it would be real easy to figure this out. But we don't, but we just know it's inevitable that most of them, if not all of them, are gonna fail. But.
Oh, well, I mean, the other part of it is, what are we gonna put for? I think Sarah, I'm gonna bring our treasure into conversation, is like, so what is our annual budget, about nine hundred K? Right, about a million dollars, nine hundred, million dollars, what are we gonna be on the hook for? That's what I'm concerned, what are we gonna get? I'm, I'm not, don't spend any money, I'm always with a value, cost benefit, right? What are we getting for our money? We spent, I think Joe mentioned, hundred and forty K, minus twenty K for the grant. So we're in about, what, twenty or twenty dollars on a project that's, I know we had other things going, that was budgeted for seventy-six. Hey, there's five reasons for that, there's other things they got, but I'm also thinking about that, too. It's like, okay, there's a lot of questions that we have now that we're, with the funding, or we're in the hood, what can we give back? Greg ran off a bunch of grant and detailed information. I think that is something that we should have known months ago, before that. Because now we come to the point now, is like, we want to go forward with all this public opposition. In my opinion, that's what I saw, I just, I, I just don't see it.
Anybody else want to comment at this time, or wait till we have a work session?
That's the only comment I want to make real quick. I know we're looking into that hundred and forty thousand. Uh, I do know that we did a vote at one time, I can't remember how much it was to add to that. My question is, is if we took a vote, spend seventy-six thousand dollars on this contract. And then say we added another thirty for the mapping that was done. We should never have paid over that amount. It was never voted on to pay over that amount. How old we had a hundred and forty thousand dollars?
I did notice it. I mean, it's in Mr. Rose every month, but. We refer the bills and we never tracked it.
But why didn't our engineering firm come back to us and tell us that they needed to add money to this contract?
That's not really just a problem, that's more a problem to draw your conclusion, buddy.
I can say with work with engineers every day, if they get close to them, they're spending, they don't just keep setting the bill, they watch. They stop their work, I stopped their work. How did we go that far over on something that we never loaded on?
I think we went over, I mean, it was probably only in like May, went over or something. Last three months add up to thirty-seven dollars. I thought we added like twenty thousand.
So that puts us at ninety, so I mean, we're fifty thousand over. Like I said, when my engineering's close, they contact me, tell me that we're running out of money. At that point, I have to take it back to council to get another approval to add more money to that contract.
The last three months have been thirty-seven thousand, so.
I'll be glad I got a answer for that.
No, just something I want to throw out there.
Lesson learned for all of us. Should have been on top of it, if you want.
I just, but I didn't even know that, I mean, I'm gonna comment, I didn't even notice that, it was over that. But that, those are the type of questions I get concerned about when you start throwing, oh, seven fifty thousand dollars or a million dollars. I mean, a million and a half is like, okay, we need to be on every cent till we know when. I mean, and again, it's not sending the money, you know, but making sure that we get a value for that back. And that's why I don't have much confidence in this current plan.
Any other comments? If not, we're gonna move on the agenda to the citizens' hearing for sewer discussion. Allison, who's first signed up?
Lauren Evans.
Lauren, still wanna talk?
Well, right now, we all know I don't want that money. I've already talked about the mold and the fungus, we're gonna put some air. The forever chemicals, the new pipes that the water supply is now going to have. And I also want to talk about something that's not only in the water supply, but in the air. When I first moved here nineteen years ago, I had my house tested for radon. And it tested positive, and I put in a radon mitigation system. The WHO in January posted this, what is radon in simple terms? Radon is a radioactive gas that has no smell, no color, no taste. Radon is produced from a natural radioactive decay of uranium, which is found in all rocks and soils. Radon can also be found in the water. Radon escapes from the ground into the air, where it decays and produces further radioactive particles. So not only when we put in that sewer system, are we gonna put molds. Or fungus, there are going to be forever chemicals in our water. Our water supply is now going to be more contaminated by radon, and so is our air. The people who don't have radon, radon mitigation in their homes now. Radon is the number one cause of lung cancer in this community and elsewhere. Thank you.
Thank you. Allison?
Greg Pouch.
You've heard this before, you've heard it from Kevin. It's gonna be a lot of the same arguments, because they're still true. We aren't under any pressing need to get a sewer system. We have working septic systems for the most part. I've moved the argument that we're going to have, that it's like a corn crop, where you plant in May, wait a couple of months. Come out, come October, you harvest the pork. Septic systems and roofs don't fail like that. If you build a thousand houses in two thousand, you're not gonna get a thousand houses failing septic systems in twenty-third. Or in twenty-fifth, it's gonna be spread out. There's not gonna be some huge surge of septic systems failing because a particular date came by. I'm worried about money that asks the McLean County Health Department for every year, how many septic permits do they issue? You're not gonna see big dips one way or the other. It's gonna be more or less constant, it's gonna look. Now, it's gonna look a lot like school enrollment or something. Okay, that being said, we at this point don't, I'm gonna stay close to microphone. At this point, we don't have a need for a septic system, or for a sewer system, rather. We have working septic systems, the costs that we're talking about, the USDA's target amount. That's like a mortgage payment every year, add a dollar to the cost of your housing. Twelve hundred dollars a month, twelve hundred dollars a year, that is not chump change. I have bought several cars for that kind of money. That is a lot of money to a lot of, to a lot of people. And yes, there's a possibility that you might be living in a house and have your septic system fail. You can have your roof fail, you can have a tree fall on your house. Surprisingly little damage from that, actually. But that's not really a reason to build a dome over the, over the village. We're not really in a situation where we need a se, a sewer system, we can get by with what we've got. And one of the first slides we had on the presentation, I think, was pretty much everything you need to make the decision. Three million dollars if we do nothing, twenty-five million dollars if we do this. Usually, I would go with the three million dollar option. It's a workable option, we don't really need to spend the twenty-two million dollars additionally. Now, that's probably the biggest argument that I hear from people about why they don't want the, why they don't want a sewer system. And again, I kind of like the, the number, I don't know, ninety-five percent. I'll frankly think most people, you'd get that high compliance with what country are you currently in. You don't get that good of a number with who's the president. Even if you're not talking to stroke victims. But eighty, I believe eighty percent are gung ho opposed for one reason or another. One of them, a lot of it is the first argument, we don't really need it. It'd be twenty-two million dollars we don't have to spend. I don't want to spend a thousand dollars a year on this, I don't want my house to have labeled on it. Costs an extra thousand dollars a year compared to the same house in Romell, plus you gotta buy further progressions. If we get down to fifty dollars a month, I think a lot of the economic, some of the economic objections go away. At first, because we're also gonna be doing a lot of damage to yards, we're gonna be doing damage to trees, we're gonna be doing damage to landscaping. The damage to trees, I mean, the USDA's been encouraging people to plant trees for the last century for a good reason. It cuts down on wind and ground level, that means that you don't have as high heating costs in winter. It cuts down on light ground level, that means you don't have as high air conditioning costs. And some HAP costs are gonna go way up, we're gonna have trees dying years after they get cut through by the construction. So it's not even just if that's cheap that I want, that I'd be opposed to it. I'd be worried a little bit about the damage to the landscaping, to the. Well. To the trees as well. Now, going back to the analogy of.
Five minutes, it's about.
Okay, going back, going back to your analogy about changing the oil. This isn't like changing the oil, this is like getting a battery. You got a battery when your own one doesn't work. You don't go replacing your battery a year after you buy it, because eventually that battery is gonna go bad. You don't get cataract surgery when you're twenty and you're paying for it out of pocket. Because eventually you'll get cataracts, why not do it now? There's no reason at this point to be doing it. So. Let's not, let's just shelve it at this stage. And proceed and not go further on this.
Thank you. Allison?
Dave in Tracy Overhold. Jason Wheeler.
This is my first meeting, so I've learned a tremendous amount. I have a couple of things I'd like to say, you know. To me, if you go wild, it's a hundred and five dollars extra a month, it would take between eleven and sixteen years to cover what it costs to replace your septic system tomorrow. That doesn't sound too bad to me, especially, we're gonna try and cut that down even more, to be more on fifty to seventy-five dollars. So radon is, is a very, very real thing to worry about, but at the same time, how much you're gonna kick up when we have to dig up a septic tank? You know, especially when you've got ten, twelve, fifteen, I understand, and I don't know, go at the same time as well, I completely agree. But I do live in the part of town where my tax is fifty-seven years old. I don't have a whole lot of faith, it's gonna make it another ten or twelve years. You know, the prices of everything are only going up, so the prices of getting a new septic system is only gonna go up. Sewer would be a big expense all at once, but it could cut down on future expenses for the people in the village. Uh, if we have better opportunities to get grants by doing it before we start having major failures, it seems like an easy thing to think about. At the very least, I feel like we should continue on and try to get a good solid estimate before we just go shoot it down, because it sounds like it might be expensive.
Okay, I don't believe there was anyone else that signed up to speak, so. In case the citizen hearing portion of our meeting is finished, move on to the next agenda item, which is the report from me. My first bullet was options on referendum, and we will work on that on our work session meeting on October seventeenth. Next item was the short-term rental discussion. We had asked Pat to send us samples of, of what some of the other towns are doing. And some of the things that we might look at would require activity from the planning commission. Pat, did all of the examples that you sent us, would they need to be reviewed by the planning commission?
I believe so, let me, give me just one second, I'm gonna pull up, I sent you the refresh record up in here. I think they were all zoning-based.
I, I have a great question, I'll pass you that. What does, what does short-term mean? Are we, are we saying we don't want to let people rent out their house for like a week, or is this for like six months?
Right. Us, in most communities, short-term rentals are defined as thirty days, stays at thirty days your last. And that derives. Um, and that derives from the hotel motel tax. It's authorized by state law, that tax is not applied to stays of thirty days or longer. Um, but you can define in your ordinance what you mean by short term rental. You know, in a more local way, it's Airbnb's and VRBOs, but usually it's defined as thirty days or less. Um, yeah, and Dave, to your question, um, most, arguably the, um, the sample I sent you that had fire safety regulations and licensing could be done without plan commission. Um, the other two samples, um, have some, yeah. It depends on what you're looking to do. It actually looks like a couple of sample, a couple of samples I gave you focus primarily on uh, fire safety and licensing requirements, which will not require a plan commission. Sample that I gave you, which would require a plan commission hearing is a Johnsburg, Illinois sample. They defined it as use and scheduled in their zoning ordinance. So, if you want to define as use and regulate that there's a special use or some other way under your zoning, it's plan commission. If you want to license and regulate things like fire safety rules, that could be done without a plan commission.
Okay, so what are your thoughts? Do we want to proceed with doing something, just drop the whole topic? I know Lexington has a short term rental and things have gone well for them. I know there's one at Lake Bloomington. I don't know how that's worked out for them. I know several other communities I've talked with, the mayor's meetings have had issues with the people attending, doing excessive partying, noise, type problems at short term rentals. So, that's why I brought it up here. Do, do we want to work on this?
I think we should.
But it's worth, you do have, you have one in town.
Good work. Uh, and I think it's all going to grow. There's going to be ever changing changes. Here in the mountains, I know, but anything in your city you've made a big change to their regulations, let up. It would be a, everyone's back to that we have to pay for these extra charges, but.
Anybody else have comments you'd like to make?
How, how, how did this, so how did this, was there, I mean, was there an issue with that, with rental that we had? Or is this just somebody just trying to be preventive? Just trying to be preventive?
I'm not aware of any issues.
Okay.
Trying to be preventative. Because it hasn't happened.
Sure.
Has occurred to the problems in other towns.
Yeah.
Mark, have you had any plans or issues?
No.
Okay. Okay, so. Do, I, I'm going to ask a couple trustees to look those three plans over and create a hybrid or pick one of the three and model something after that. Bill, would you and Lynn dig into that? Or back at our next meeting? Forward with it? Okay, thank you. Next agenda item is just an awareness thing. College Jackson Center contacted me, they're doing a pilot on filtering plastic out of drain water. And they came out, looked at a couple of our crates, and they're going to be bringing one or two filters for us to see if they how the filter would work as far as keeping plastic out of the drain water, so much plastic together. So, uh, they haven't brought them out yet, but when they do, I'll let everybody know. First one's going to be at the corner of Danny Wood Street, was it Rock, not Rockaway, uh, yeah, Avon Denis Street. And, uh, they're probably only bring one. So, we'll keep everybody posted on that. Next item was, Pat made us aware of the option we have now to transfer the responsibility for collecting fines from Pat's office to a collection agency. I believe that got sent to everybody, and it would free up a lot of Pat's times, and it would save us money if we went with this new system. Did anybody have questions for Pat? Did everybody understand how the system would work?
What kind of fines would this be? What would be example of it? My, my, my question is, these, these agencies scare me, I mean, they really go after people hard. So like, what, what kind of people would we, what kind of fines would we be issuing if we'd send these collection agencies after people?
These are ordinance violation fines. These are people who received a ticket, did not pay the ticket over the counter, their ticket went to court, and we obtained a judgment in court against them.
It's been a long process that we've asked them to pay for a long time and they haven't paid.
Yeah, in, in my humble opinion, any logical person would pay over the counter instead of going to court. Costs much less and takes much less time. Usually by the time we get to court, it's, you either lack the means to pay and therefore require a lot of effort after collection to actually get money, or there are people who are obstinate for whatever reason.
Okay.
It is also, for what it's worth, the same collection agency the county uses for collection of traffic fines and similar, similar, uh, fees over to the circuit court.
Pat, do you know how much we currently are trying to collect right now?
I, I don't, but I can get you that number. You don't have a lot, to be honest with you. Um, but I can get you an exact number of what we have impending judgments. It, it would be, even if we have a limited amount right now, we're trying to collect. I think it's an advantageous framework for you moving forward, just because it'll, you know, even if we have one case a year, it saves you money on that case. Um, and it doesn't, you know, it doesn't cost you anything to enroll. But I, I will get your, um, quantify how many cases we, we are actively trying to collect for you and those judgments you know.
We have any other questions for? If we think we want to go this way, then we need a motion for me to approve this agreement presented by, uh, office.
I make the motion that we approve the collection agency agreement.
Come on, I'll second it.
Okay, so a motion in second to sign or agree with the debt collection agreement and get that in place. Uh, any final questions or discussions? Not Allison roll call?
Joe Boyd.
Yes.
Stephen Kelly.
Yes.
Eric Kinder.
Yes.
Phil Morris.
Yes.
Lynn Norris.
Yes.
Like Pat said, we don't have a lot in process, but if we save a few bucks, we buy our collection agents a good rather than Pat. It's good for both of us, so. Okay, next item on the agenda is the TIF ordinance for daycare. This, we've discussed multiple times, and the last solution was we would pay reimburse twenty thousand dollars of construction costs upfront, and then rebate half of the taxes for the life of the TIF with a maximum of a hundred thousand dollars over ten, eleven, twelve years, whatever's left in the TIF. So, did anybody have any questions on that?
I have, I have, this, I guess more like, do we have, I apologize if we do. Do we have like a TIF policy, what we use to like, hey, here's our criteria that we use to like?
We have policies for upgrades, remodeling, that type of thing.
Okay.
We do not have a policy for new.
Okay.
Businesses.
Okay.
And I think it's pretty, this is the first application we've received for a new business.
Okay.
So we had one that helped us.
Right, right.
Design as well, because we didn't know what, you know.
Okay.
Have any other questions?
So, I guess, other part is, so this is a new business that hasn't opened yet. I think they're planning an opening in the winter, is that, or?
I haven't seen enough data.
Okay, for that, so.
Yeah.
So, do you want to do this, we have to do it now, or do we do it when the business is up and running for a new business? Well, what is the pros?
It would be now, because the twenty thousand is to go towards, um, construction costs at, after we vote. And then upon completion after that, so nothing prior, that's my understanding, right? Nothing prior to when we approved it.
Okay. So by doing it this way, so this is a new business that we have, this is the first one of its kind that we've ever done for the village. So this means that if we have any other future businesses, new ones, then they could, this is kind of like set the, they can still, doesn't mean that they're going to get it, but.
Yeah.
But it means this is kind of a template that.
Yeah.
Hey, they, and it looks like, so the twenty thousand of the hundred, so I know that they had more than, definitely more than a hundred thousand dollars for the cost. So, so this was just defined that if you exceed the hundred thousand dollars of construction costs?
No.
Oh, no, okay.
No, that has nothing.
Okay.
To do with it.
Those just twenty thousand dollars be reimbursed as they present receipts for being completed.
Okay, I see that. Two total cumulative reimbursements paid by the village will not exceed one hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
Okay.
That includes the twenty thousand of the, correct.
So.
The twenty thousand would be for construction costs. The rest would be half of their real estate taxes.
With the TIF as the gap, of, yeah.
For the next ten or eleven, twelve years until the TIF expires.
Right, so.
So if they rebated three thousand a year for ten years, then they would get thirty thousand tax rebates and twenty thousand construction, they would only get fifty thousand. If they pay fifteen thousand a year and half of that was seventy five hundred, then they would get a baited seventy five hundred dollars a year for ten years, which would amount to seventy five thousand, and the twenty thousand construction, that would be a max of ninety five thousand.
So, so with this re-probably, does that mean that there, it's not going to be, it's going to be, is it in the TIF? Directly in the TIF, just?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, okay, so basically, we don't get the, so the value doesn't increase, or is it? So when, so when they bill on it, the value of that real estate is going to be increasing, there's going to be a tax assessed on that, and half of their private tax would be, no more than fifty percent would be refunded to them through this. And that's twenty thousand upfront plus that.
Yeah.
Not exceed one hundred thousand?
Yeah.
Gotcha, I understand, thanks.
Okay, uh, if everybody's in agreement, then to proceed, we need a motion to adopt this ordinance. Allison, what would the ordinance number be?
Thirteen seventy one.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve ordinance number thirteen seventy one.
So it's the TIF daycare.
For the daycare.
We have a motion in a second for approving ordinance thirteen seventy one, which is the TIF daycare. Do we have any final questions or discussions?
Yeah, I mean, in, in this, my reservation, not, is because they, it hasn't started, the business hasn't. I know they did the construction, they went through and did that, and I guess.
First of it, yeah.
My, my part is, is that, hey, if they can, they want to pay, they have a business. Yeah, okay, if that's the way we're going to do it, but they haven't even started yet. So, why would we need to do it now? Can we do it when they open up, when they show that they have?
Incentive that they can, that they've done this thus far, and then that's what the, the concern portion of it is the rebate portion. Where that contingent upon them continuing to operate the business.
Ten million.
Twenty thousand could be a loss.
Ten million.
If they never open their door.
Yeah, I mean, in ten million.
That's a risk for them.
So we're, even if they don't open it, we're still obligated to, we made their.
Yeah.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Yes, but maybe that's.
The twenty, the twenty.
Yeah, yeah, we're going to go with this one.
That's, that's really what the TIF district's for, is really the whole point of having a TIF district, is you're trying to entice businesses and increase things. So if you don't do it for this, then what should you do?
Well, I know we were on, I was on the board when Mayor Cotty was, or Chief Cotty was mayor on that, and we talked about it, and it was like, kind of, what was like the infrastructure? So this was different, so basically, oh, sewer, you know, or gridiron sewer. What about water mains? What about other infrastructure, roads, sidewalks, things like that, to bring that to, to make it pay? Build it and they will come.
I believe there were also discussions about trying to attract drugstores and grocery stores and different businesses.
Yeah.
Not just infrastructure.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah. I mean. Yeah.
And, yeah. All right, are there any other questions or discussion items? And, uh, we're going to do a vote, Allison roll call?
Joe Boyd.
Yes.
Kevin Kelly.
No.
Eric Kinder.
Yes.
Phil Morris.
Yes.
Lynn Norris.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries four to one. Next bullet point on the, uh, agenda is the TIF ordinance for Hudson Grain. And Kevin, you were gone last month, I know, you asked about it, and I think there was stuff in the minutes. Hudson Grain submitted two TIF applications, one for the concrete work that they did just sell.
I was, I was able to see that, I think recorded through somewhere, I got something to have the details of what they, what they did.
Right.
Right? Seventy five hundred dollars, is that, is that what it was?
Right, that's what our agreement is.
Yeah.
What we want to approve is reversing them seventy five hundred dollars of that cost. So the second TIF agreement, we decided to, our policy was only going to be to do one TIF per business per calendar year or budget year. So, are there any questions on the TIF for Hudson Grain, the seventy five hundred dollars? Now, the, what would the ordinance number be, Allison?
Thirteen seventy two.
Thirteen seventy two, uh, would someone make a motion for approve ordinance thirteen seventy two, the Hudson Grain TIF? I make a motion to approve, uh, ordinance number thirteen seventy two for the Hudson Grain Company.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion in second, is there any final questions or discussions? If not, Allison roll call?
Joe Boyd.
Yes.
Kevin Kelly.
Yes.
Eric Kinder.
Yes.
Phil Morris.
Yes.
Lynn Norris.
Yeah.
Yes. Next bullet point is the building code ordinance in a vote. This is the ordinances that we've been working on for several months. Danny, we've had the manuals for at least the required period of time, correct?
Yeah.
And we have the modifications from Pat that we share with normal or get from normal. I think there were sixty seven pages of modifications. I'm sure Danny's got all of his memory right and where he did discuss.
Yeah, when you say there are sixty seven pages there, I have sixty seven more pages to look at.
Danny, are you ready to move forward with it then? Work to adopt the ordinances they asked?
Um, I'm okay with following what they do. But I, I have not read one single word of it, so.
Okay, uh. I believe this would be a ordinance, isn't that what Pat sent us, Allison?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm guessing it'll be ordinance thirteen seventy three.
We're packed.
Pat? Pat, is there anything we need to do besides pass that ordinance that has the exceptions?
No, you, you've done the prerequisites before we could adopt the ordinance by buying the physical books. By adopting the ordinance tonight, we would take your building codes into conformity with normals. I did the best I could in reviewing those, not having. I did the best I could in reviewing those, not having my finger on the pulse of your day-to-day operations for uh building projects. To take out the things that wouldn't apply, so I think it's pretty darn close to where it should be. Once it's adopted, it's then, ten days later, it's applicable to use your construction, um, and, and so no. Learn and adopt the ordinance, that's all you need to do.
Okay, so, are there any, before we uh do the motion, is there any additional questions or discussion?
I just asked, Denny, do you have a reservation, do you, you want this to be adopted from your experience at zoning, and?
Yeah, I'd like to move forward with updating the codes.
Okay.
So we need someone to make a motion to the, the building codes and the exceptions, ordinance thirteen seventy-three.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number thirteen seventy-three, uh, building code ordinance.
We have a second?
I'll second it.
Any final discussion or questions? Allison, roll call.
Joe Boyd.
Yes.
Kevin Kelly.
Yes.
Eric Kinder.
Yes.
Phil Morris.
Yes.
Phil Norris.
Yeah.
Thank you, everyone, next is uh, Denny, Watercolor Property Streets of Zoning.
Two and a half hours in there.
That's my bedtime, that's the first thing in my report, uh, two point nine million gallons this month. Uh, ninety-eight thousand a day, uh, me, Mark, and Mike went to the water conference. Uh, Mike took his water license test. We uh put in the water service and ran that over for the daycare, uh, I've been uh working on. The West and Walnut Street drainage project, which is the first. Major one of the three that I hopefully get to this year, and have been interrupted numerous times by all the solar permits that I've been having all summer long. I don't have a number for how many I've had, but uh, that seems to be way more than even roofing permits at this point in time. Uh, happily, we had the last little pickup of the season. Um, the trunk retreat, that's the first uh couple of guests speak about. Uh, plan on taking a few, few pieces of the uh village equipment over like we have in the past, and uh. See if we can maybe con fill or somebody else at the hand and out candy again. Um, and then uh, a comment that uh, um, I had about the sewers I had, that I heard Eric talk about. Uh, the systems failing, and, and I think Kevin asked, what's the number that's failing? I think maybe a different spin on that question that could be asked, um, is how many systems, uh. How many lots in town don't have a system on file with the health department? Um, I've seen a couple in the last couple of months, that is, the houses have changed ownership and have a subject system. They come to do an inspection and there is no system. Uh, so a new system is then put in, so uh, maybe a, a different way to ask that question is not. How many are failing, but how many are not present, so. What's that, so, that's all I have.
Thank you, Denny, is anyone have questions for Denny? Okay, next item is uh Philip Marshall, watch that.
All right, um, I handed out my report, so you have it, this is just everything. I'm just a couple of things to point out, uh, Officer Lane and myself participated in the Hudson Elementary School safety drill. That's simply a drill, uh, what to do if there's an active shooter in the building and they needed to lock down. Making sure that they follow the guiding principles that we've worked together on, and how to lock down the room and lock down the school. And they did a very good job, so I was very proud to see that they, they followed the recommendations. We took our four-hour Axon body camera training, didn't remember we purchased that system. We're not wearing the body cameras yet until, we won't start that until we get the squad car video systems, which will be probably in November. And then we'll need training on that, and then the system will be up and running for us. Um, of course, we'll be participating in the Halloween trunk or treat, the police department will be out there, we'll decorate up the truck, I think, this year. And it'll, it'll look a little bit different, because we have some ideas how to decorate it. Um, Halloween hours, I already sent this to Quill, um, but the uh, Halloween hours are five to eighteen. So in case anybody asks you that, uh, both Chris and I will be working that evening, so we'll be out in about. And we issued five solicitor permits during the month, and I think no surprise. To Denny, they were all for solar, so um, I won that. Yeah, so they were all for solar, so it, it's a big thing, it, it truly is, it truly is. And then we're also registered to golf carts for officially three houses that have been registered in the village. And uh, I attended the first St. Jude fundraising in the holly jolly Christmas, so.
Questions? Does that forty, does the forty-three include the one he had to suspend?
No, that would make forty-two active, so we did issue forty-three permits, so.
Any questions for Mark?
Yeah, I think you wanna mention, I think you wanna mention uh, anniversary for uh, somebody in the department?
Oh, yes, Chris, yeah, Chris had his two-year anniversary with the department, that's just this, uh, last week, so. Had a little pizza celebration for him.
Okay, no other questions, thanks, Mark. Next on the list is civil events, Jeff, uh, I know the siren by the fire station went off, this one went off. Does anybody know if the one on the south end of town went off?
I don't know.
Probably, go ahead, hope you heard one, or.
In the basement.
You're in the basement, so, we'll assume it's working, so. Next reports are standing committees, uh, we'll start with Lynn.
Luckily, one of my items is already taken care of. Uh, and wait manual, we're not gonna vote on it tonight, so do you guys wanna table a discussion until next week? For next month?
Not three or four, I will keep it.
Is there anything you should do between now and then?
You guys have the, the revised copy, um, I have, it's tabled for this one, because I did have a, some questions come up, and I haven't had a chance to meet. With um, that person yet, uh, on them, so that's why if there's any more changes, I didn't wanna vote on it tonight. So we have time to review it, there's one typo on um, number of. Five days there that we need to, or personal days that we need to.
That's what I was gonna ask, how many personal days? Six.
Yeah.
Okay, because, yeah, a long history.
Yes, I know, but that we look back, it's legitimate, and now we have to fix it. Um, that was, that was most recommended by our, working on this with us. Um. So yeah, so we can finish discussion, and then if there's any additional changes, I'll send that to everybody too, um, as soon as we. Talking about it, um, so then we can review our pass on it. Um, the next item was the social media policy I sent everybody, um, this was an item that was tasked to Mark. A while ago, and it got kinda tabled, so it's got brought back up since we're doing that, um. The annual, um. So if anybody had any questions or concerns about it, we can talk about it, if not, we can. Is this something we do have to vote on to?
Part of the manual?
It's not part of the manual, should we add it to the manual, is that easier?
We can do that, I think so.
Okay.
The, the manual you sent us is like four different things or something already, cannabis, drug policy.
So there's the one big chunk of it, it's our action manual, the rest of it is supporting materials that we have to.
Okay, I'm just saying, there's like three other policies in the manual that you sent us, so I don't know if it should be part of the manual, or.
I would suggest you put it in the manual, I like to have the manuals being your sole source of personnel policies, be my best.
So since, okay, so since, but since now it's a new single item brought to our attention, maybe I just wanna review it now, or do you want to? Give me a go ahead and put it in the manual? I'm looking at stuff.
It looks pretty boilerplate, I assume Mark just got it from somewhere else, Dan.
Yeah, I, I, I rely heavily on, on that one, the policy, and make some adjustments for our side, but yeah.
Mark, I do have a question, now when I, I read it, I thought I brought a copy with it, but there was a part that says. I wish I had it in front of you, but it's something about, yeah. Okay, so, it was a part, okay, so this is like. Okay, I'm just gonna throw the other, so, nor employee will represent themselves in a public forum as an employee or the village with other information, opinion, or posture. That would bring embarrassment to the village. Obviously, if something that has to be brought up to the board or to the village, whatever, it might cause embarrassment to the. Village, but it'd be the right thing to do. That's what I'm trying to think of that.
That's on social media.
This is.
Social media.
Social media.
So how to, like, how that interacts on.
You're right, I'm thinking of it as employment.
Bring it up all you want to.
Okay.
Okay, I think it's fine.
Okay.
Okay. All right, thank you, Lynn, next we've got streets, Phil. Uh, girls don't have any business, uh, other than uh, Pat, I had a question for you on the easements you prepared for us for the drainage.
Mm-hmm.
Denny now has all the signed copies, and uh, do those can, or are just sending those to you, or?
Yeah, though, if they've been signed by everybody and approved by the village, if he could send me those originals, I'll get them all recorded.
Okay, all right, very good, we'll eat that. And um, also, I, I've been watching Denny and, and his crew put in the new drainage uh, along West Street, and uh. I think it's really going pretty smooth, all in all, don't you, Denny? With the new equipment, uh, with the backdrop to help, and uh, I could see some of the areas that they got into going around the corner up here by. Uh, Kenny Coons's house, there was a lot of fiber optics and gas pipes and stuff in the, in there that they had marked well, but. Digging around them would have been pretty tough, a lot of manual digging wouldn't have been Denny without the backdrop. So, I think it's going well, so, not to extend the meeting, I'll end my conversation. Okay, ordinance and zoning, I brought up those topics, I'm still pursuing a trustee, uh, police department, Kevin?
Yeah. Um, we have, the only thing I have is to update the status of the. Advertise that we have for the part-time police officer, so we have a total of seventeen applicants, they all went, we did not receive any. Paper forms, but of the seventeen that we received through Indeed, only, or I take that back, we have eighty-one applied today. Like, I just saw like a four thirteen or something, so of the seventeen, I worked with Chief Cotty and um, Officer Lane. And they're, they actually are able to go to, log into their system and their network to identify which officers are currently. Correct me, um, saying this, Mark, is like if there are state certified as police officers, what is the, is that a terminology?
Yes, if you're state certified, we have a database to see, see if you are.
And to show, we got people by name, there was, there was one person, I think I emailed you guys on, that um, uh, that uh. Was questionable, because they have those multiple hits on that, and you followed up with that person, that person no longer. Uh, it, it is not a police officer at all, and that's what the resume kind of stated to. The white officer that did, was certified. Uh, Mark indicated to me that he actually accepted a full-time job at another police department.
Yes.
So, he's withdrawing his application, correct?
Yes.
Wrong guy, very good, so we have zero, that's all of that, so. We can, the, the, the Indeed app, the Indeed is, put the guard, the Indeed advertisement is still, is free, it don't cost, it doesn't cost anything, but. It is, should we keep it up, should we keep on trying, should we use other avenues? What is your thoughts, my feelings about that, I mean, if it's free, I would like it.
Yeah, I would recommend you continue it in the Indeed, and then if Mark has other recommendations for us to pursue, we could look at pursuing those too.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, there's one more thing, too, and last, this, this is not police related, but this is like, we talked about our annual. What is it, our property tax assessment, is that, that's, I mean, I think I remember December, that was a vote that we had to decide on that, okay. What I got from the um, tax assessor is they gave us a village assessment from last year, and. It's basically shown by commercial, example farming, visceral, uh, residential, the count and accessibility, and then an estimated tax assessment for this. As you know, we all got our assessments in the mail, they didn't go down, they went significantly up, but I thought. This is, this, I'm gonna pass these out in October, but I figured wait by December, if we have to vote in December on that, we have. This to decide, or help us decide, so, I don't, actually, I have, I made copies, I only had two dollars. I'm sorry, so I didn't make enough copies, but maybe uh, I can get some to Sarah, and she can. She make copies later on, okay, I'll, I'll put one in everybody's inbox, I guess, I'll do that.
A high-level question for Pat on this, okay, I think the assessment for the coming went up seven percent or, or more. We do not raise the amounts that we levied last year, we would still draw in an additional revenue about that.
No, um, it's slightly different than that, your levy is a request for the amount of money you want to receive. You don't levy a rate, you levy a total dollars you wanna receive, and the county reverse engineers a rate. So, if, if, or, and we obtained the information Kevin gets, we, we get that for our taxing bodies, and we use that. When we prepare calculations for your levy, um, so that's great information to have. But, what the county does is they say, if you want, you know, seventy thousand dollars, and you, you, you have, well, let me put it differently. If your tax base went up, so the assessments within the village went up seven percent. You could increase your levy request by seven percent and not increase your tax rate. But, yeah, the, the way it works is you levy a dollar value, you want the county to collect and pay to you, they reverse engineer the rate. If we go over a seven percent increase in last year's total uh, dollar value taxes collected, we do have to do a truth in taxation hearing. And publish notice in advance for that.
So if we don't do the seven percent, somebody else just, I mean, the county gets the money? Excellent. If we don't do the seven percent, somebody else just, I mean, the county gets done?
No, it, your ta, it has no impact on anybody else. Every year, the tax bill is a new and independent proposition from the prior year. So your tax bill is comprised of, of dollars allocated to each taxing body based on the levy request that each taxing body made. Theoretically, if every taxing body asks for zero dollars, your tax bill would be zero dollars. So you, you, what you paid last year is not relevant to what you pay this year necessarily. So if you don't take a seven percent increase, if you ask for the exact same amount of money that you asked for last year, your rate would go down. Um, but that, your rate going down doesn't affect how much unit five asked for in taxes from your residents, for example.
So, so we set the dollar amount regardless of whether the assessed valuation goes up or down?
Correct.
Okay. So the rate gets changed, but the dollar amount is what we set.
Right. So, Pat, so look at this. So basically it went up seven, the assessment value went up seven percent. On this, so it went from forty-five, forty-five million, five hundred seventy-five thousand to forty-eight million to seven hundred ninety thousand. And even then the tax assumption said this is an estimate. I mean, it's a pretty good estimate, but, and then, but it's an estimate. So, um, yeah.
Okay. Thanks for hitting that, Kevin. Kevin, do you have anything else?
Oh, no, I don't. Thanks.
Okay. Next is Water Department. Joe?
So I sent you guys all this email. I'll give you a chance to look. Uh, this isn't, this, this is a ordinance change that doesn't actually change any prices. Prices changed in twenty fourteen, but we didn't change the ordinance apparently. So this ordinance, uh, is, is to just, is to change the ordinance to match what we've been doing since twenty fourteen as far as water prices. Does anyone have any questions? Does that make sense? Do we make sense? Okay. Make a motion to adopt the change in ordinance, the ordinance to change the water rates.
Thirteen seventy-four.
Thirteen seventy-four.
Any final questions or discussion? Allison roll call.
Joe Boyd.
Yes.
Kevin Kelly.
Yes.
Aaron Tinder.
Yes.
Bill Morris.
Yes.
Bill Norris.
Yeah.
Curious. Joe, we got anything else? Okay. Next, uh, Public Property, Eric. So, so have we ordered this slide and the other stuff?
Yes.
Yes, we have.
Good.
Nothing working on it.
Excellent.
Yeah. They said sometime in November, like close to Thanksgiving for a break. The whole thing is a form.
Thanks. We got the, uh, we got the components to, uh, honorate today to fix the decimal part of the slide that was taken on.
Good. All right. Next, so anybody have any questions for Eric? Next is Liquor Commissioner. Just me. I have nothing for, uh, business on the liquor commissioner side. Uh, we have no business to move into closed session. So we will skip that. Does anybody have any final business? All right. And you realize tonight's length is a record probably in any way, but I think we had some excellent discussion and ideas. And we need to have this discussion. And I look forward to our next meeting in two weeks or we'll kind of continue on where our options are. So I want to thank everybody, especially the audience for sticking it out. Long meeting. Uh, meeting is adjourned. Thank you. No, I gotta do a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second? Allison roll call.
Joe Boyd.
Yes.
Kevin Kelly.
Yes.
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 I don't.